Yeah, no, we've done that, I think, before in the past.
Okay.
So however you want to handle it.
Okay, if you...
Maybe once he shows up.
You just want to take this with you and put her name on there?
In case she shows up and then bring it to you.
And then just before we get to unscheduled.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
That works.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting. Will you prepare for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our generous heavenly Father, by your divine grace, we ask that you shed your guiding light upon us in our public charge. Grant that the business we conduct this evening will be both pleasing in your sight and in the best interest of Inglewood's future. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Member Olson.
Good evening, everyone.
Member Berentine.
Present.
Member Cuesta.
Present.
Member Martinez.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Mayor Russell.
Um, present.
Here pretend mayor.
Moving on to Agenda Item Five, consideration of minutes of the previous meeting. I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
A second.
Are there any corrections or comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, six eyes.
Moving on to Agenda Item Six, recognition of scheduled public comment. We have four people speaking this evening. And Mr. Scott Bran is the first member. And Inglewood resident will address council regarding the Pearl Street PUD. Good evening, Mr. Bran. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Scott Bran, and the address is 3323 South Pearl Street, Inglewood 801. So I wanted to apologize for missing the previous meeting. We have a boy in the service, and he came home for leave, and we kind of got a little sidetracked, if you will. So I apologize again. As far as the intent of what we want to do with this property and our relationship to Casey, Casey and Kelly and I and my wife have all been working on this together. And, you know, we're...I don't know if anybody is really planning for their future in terms of retirement, but we are, and this property's part of it. You know, we want to build the property out, and then we want to sell one part of it so that we can own the other part. And that way, we can become snowbirds. And number two is, we spend a lot of time at Craig Hospital. And so we're pretty close to Craig and feel close to Craig. So it's kind of a home point for us, for our future, anyway. The other thing is, is that, you know, Swedish Hospital, and I'm not sure this is 100% accurate, but Swedish Hospital and Craig Hospital, they've got a Tier One hospital connected to a, probably the leading rehabilitation hospital. And surrounded by aging homes. I mean, a lot of them are falling apart. You've got 60-plus-year-old homes and older. And I don't know how attractive that is to doctors of a Tier One hospital. You know, you're the only...you've got the only hospital that doesn't have a campus with as much, as far as I know. So it's just...I really feel like upgrading and renewing is really important for a city, especially with that combination. That's pretty much all I have to say. We just like it. It's part of our future, so we're hoping that it happens.
Let me see if there's any questions for you from City Council. Actually, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you for coming. I assume you're one of the property owners?
I am.
Okay. That was my question.
Oh.
Yeah, you didn't say that, but I kind of inferred that by what you were saying, so.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Berentine.
Since we already had the public hearing, I see that a city attorney is nervous over there. So we mean no disrespect, but I think she would prefer that we not comment on this.
Once the public hearing was closed, you could take no further evidence on the matter. So while anybody is free to come speak to the City Council, statements made tonight in public session are not part of your decision-making matrix.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Kelly Rhodes, and Inglewood resident will address council regarding the Pearl Street PUD. Good evening, Ms. Rhodes.
Good evening, and I am Kelly Rhodes. I am a resident at 3317 South Pearl Street, Inglewood 80113. And I just wanted to say, I too did not make the last meeting. And unfortunately, I was recovering from surgery, and so Casey had my permission to act on my behalf. He has kept me informed this whole entire time. I'm just excited to see what the possibilities that I can do for my property. And my family has been at this property for just about 60 years. And so, you know, all I want to do is just upgrade it and stay a resident. And I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. And in light of what the city attorney just shared, there will be no questions from council. Thank you very much. Our third speaker is Kathleen Bailey, and Inglewood resident will address council regarding accountability.
Kathleen Bailey, District Four. For the last year and a half, what I have been presenting before City Council is far from the pleasant and often delightfully funny Inglewood history stories all of us enjoy listening from Doug Cohn. But the truth is not always pleasant or funny. And in this case, our city chose to take risk, a risk on the health and life of their own employees to save money and ignored state laws and regulations to do so. Like most law-abiding citizens, I took for granted that our city always complied with all state laws and regulations and always placed the health and safety and well-being of the community first and foremost. And then anyone who fails to do this would be fired. But as I read Inglewood's own documents, I was not only stunned and heartbroken, but outraged to learn that for five years, starting in 2012 with the 2011 sludge, while under the governing oversight of four of the recent majority members of this city council, Rick Gillett, Linda Olson, Joe Jefferson, and Stevie Yates, and two Inglewood city managers, Gary Sarris and our current city manager, Eric Keck, and two Inglewood utility directors, Stu Fonda and our current utility director, Tom Brennan. When the radioactive elements in our Allo Water Frustration Plant sludge had increased to a level that was no longer safe for municipal landfill workers and required disposal of the state's costly hazardous and radioactive-approved landfill, our city chose to ignore state health and safety laws and regulations that were specifically intended to minimize the risks to employees for the stochastic cancer health effects that result from chronic exposure to low-dose radiation and began illegally stockpiling years of radiation-emitting sludge on our small Allo Water Frustration Plant site simply because they did not want to pay the high cost of disposal at the hazardous and radioactive-approved landfill. And subsequent to that deplorable decision, in 2012, two Allo Water Frustration Plant employees were diagnosed with cancer, one with lung and one with bladder, and both of those employees died in 2013, followed in 2013 by a third employee diagnosed with cancer, colon cancer, who survived, followed in 2015 by a fourth Allo Water Frustration Plant employee diagnosed with cancer, lung cancer, and he died in 2016. In addition, following the historic increase in radium that began in 2009 and without any effort by Inglewood to identify the resulting increase in radiation dose, the background radiation in the small sludge press building had increased, and two employees who worked the sludge press and one of their wives were diagnosed with colon cancer, two in 2010 and one in 2012. Equally deplorable to ignoring state laws has been Inglewood's efforts to deny, minimize, and mislead citizens about what Inglewood did and just how unsafe Inglewood's sludge actually is when health and safety regulations are ignored. First, Inglewood gave us Keck and Brennan's 4116 Talking Points along with the mantra, "Ah, the sludge is safe and no more dangerous than living in an Inglewood brick home." And then Inglewood gave us the Gib Report utilizing random single-day sample air tests from all the way back 2001 and 2004 to assure Inglewood's citizens that there was no current cancer risk. When the Talking Points and Gib Report were both shown to be misleading, Inglewood then hired Integral Consulting, who advertised that they provided fence assistance against litigation involving cancer claims associated with sludge. And for $111,675 of Inglewood citizens' money, Inglewood and Integral gave the Integral citizens a skewed adjusted-average cancer risk report based on selected sludge data going all the way back to 2002. The historic increase in radium began in 2009, not 2002. I will not be asking you whether you like or dislike Keck or Brennan. I'm sure they have been very nice and very helpful to you. I will simply show you Keck and Brennan's own work, own words, from their own documents. And I will be asking this new council to consider whether Keck and Brennan's actions reflect the integrity Inglewood citizens deserve. With the caliber and background of this current council, none of what I share will be over your heads or beyond your commitment of engaged active oversight on behalf of the Inglewood citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Bailey from council? Councilmember Berentine.
I think I just voted for you. I didn't mean to. I'm supposed to do the request to speak button. I would appreciate if you could bring us back at some point to the original request you had. I think it would be unfair for you to ask what those are after all of the presentations. But I know that you had some very specific requests from the city and a resolution to this. And at some point, I don't know whether you could give that to us now or whether you can prepare that for us so that we have some point of where we can move forward from, if that's possible.
Well, what my...I mean, everything that I've given to all of you over the last year and a half, you guys can share. What I am doing right now is addressing who I have now in front of me. And I have a series of planned presentations that, from my perspective as a citizen, reflect very poorly on the choices that were made by people in positions of power and authority. You all may not have the same interpretation of those documents and those words and those works as I have. But I want to make sure that all of you are presented with that information and have copies of it for you to then decide whether they should be fired. As a citizen, I am outraged that they still are here. I don't know why Stu Fonda wasn't fired. I don't know why Gary Sarris wasn't fired for initiating this, and I don't know why they have been maintained. But again, I will make sure...I will not be asking anybody to make a decision based on my emotional opinion. I try to do things by my own fact, by my own research, by their, Inglewood's own documents. So I have a series...I have a plan in that mode to present to this new council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our fourth and final scheduled public comment from Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident. He will address council regarding historic preservation.
Good evening, council. I have two things to talk to you tonight about. The first is the military memorial over at the high school. Do you have somebody in your circle of friends and family who has served in the military? Maybe your granddad? Your mom? Your grandma? Maybe a classmate from school? Maybe the old guy across the street? That's not me. Inglewood High School has the only permanent military memorial that we know of in a high school in the whole country. Have you ever thought about doing something really special for that person as you treat it? And a thank you. You could buy a paver brick in honor of that person. It would be a permanent symbol. And there just happen to be some forms in the back here from the high school that you can call about for any information like that. The person doesn't have to be from Inglewood and can be from any time period, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Cold War, the Gulf Wars, and those still to come, probably. Just a thought. Have a look at the forms in the back. The second part, two weeks ago, I mentioned in passing when I was talking about that oil company, Baske, that they were in the Coleman Building. And I thought I'd give you the rest of the history on the Coleman Building. It's over on Clay Street, just north of Oxford. The story starts with a fellow whose name is Harley Holmes. Harley is spelled the British way. Was in Carbondale and came to Denver. And in 1920, he got to thinking, "Why do all the cars and trucks only have two drive wheels? I think they should have some four-wheel-drive capabilities." And so he started thinking about it. And I don't know if he talked to Ford, to Chevy, and all them guys, but nobody wanted to have four-wheel drives. So he built an add-on aftermarket kit. His factory was where downtown Littleton is right now. And he invented and patented the four-wheel-drive mechanism that we're using today. And when people were able to get around in the snow a little bit better, someone had to go up into the mountains. And they got stuck in the snow. So then he had to invent the snow plow. So he invented the rotary snow plow based on the idea from the railroads and the highway department up in Rocky Mount National Park is still using the same concept there. About a year later, he said, "Why is it on passenger cars? The motor and the weight are in the front, but the drive wheels are in the back. We should have front-wheel-drive cars." He has the patent on that. Anyway, so that's just the start of the company. They were doing so well. They were building trucks, heavy-duty trucks, tractors at airports. The airplanes got big enough, they needed to have tractors to pull the airplanes away from the gates. So he invented the little tractor used at the airport. It kept on getting bigger and bigger. He opened a second plant in Littleton, an accessory plant. And then in the 1940s, they opened the one over here on Clay Street. And he asked the question, at that point, if you wanted to maintain your streets or your shopping area, you needed three or four different trucks. You needed the road grader or the bulldozer to plow the snow. And then you needed to have another machine to sweep it and another machine to put sand down, and a fourth machine to spray water. This guy said, "Well, what if I invent four attachments that you can put on your full-size pickup truck?" The detachable blade that you see around Inglewood, that's from Coleman. In the back of the truck, there's two variations. One is a tank for liquid, the other is a hopper for sand. And then he had a thing called a piggy vac, which hooked onto the tailgate. And you could drive around, and that was the street sweeper during the whole time of Cinderella City. A Coleman piggy vac machine was the machine that did all the snow plowing and taking care of our thing. Anyway, that's what was going on over at Coleman on Clay Street. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cohn, are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Berentine.
How long did they...his process...how long was it used in the city from what period of time?
Oh, and the pickup truck with the attachment? Well, I think we're still using some of the pickup trucks with snow plow blades on the front. So we're still using some of those. They have some snow...yeah, the big trucks with snow plows that are permanently attached, the blades permanently attached.
So it was from 1920 till now?
Well, yeah, and Coleman was bought out in 1987. So they ceased operations in 1987. They had a great run.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohn. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, recognition of unscheduled public comment. Do you have a list for me? Okay. All right, we'll pass them out. The first person coming to speak is Jeff Frazier. Good evening, Mr. Frazier.
Good evening. Jeff Frazier, 2898 South Grant Street. Also, coincidentally, happens to be District One, which I see we have a vacant seat. I want to applaud now Judge Jefferson, former Mayor Jefferson, for his longtime service to our district. And I want to reiterate how lucky we are to have such great candidates that have applied to this open position. We need a council that...oh, and I also want to applaud you all, as well as the city, for your transparency in this process. It's been...I haven't been able to make all these meetings, but I've been watching to hear what the candidates have to say about my district. So we have a good voice here on council going forward. And I think in 2018, we really need a council that can make decisions. So I urge you to make a decision here tonight so my district can be represented in the important business that's going before council in the coming weeks. This seat's up in less than two years. They will be held accountable. Under the charter, it says that the council shall appoint a new council member upon a vacancy in the middle of a term. So I urge you to do that. We don't need to waste an already-strapped election budget with, like Manager Keck said earlier today, about $15,000 in expenses for a special election. I urge you to appoint someone who's a consensus builder, who's not a divider, who can help council reach consensus while respecting differing opinions and to work in good faith with the city's best intentions in mind. Let's have a full council now so we can make decisions moving forward with all the important business that's coming before council in the coming weeks. So I urge you to make a decision tonight so we can have a full council and move forward productively in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Frazier? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming. Next, we have Cindy Powders, speaking about rezoning. That's okay.
My name is Cindy Powders. I live at 4565 South Le Pen Court in Inglewood. And I've never spoken before a city council meeting before. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen. I'm here tonight to talk about the rezoning, the proposed rezoning at 1327 West Tough Street in Inglewood, which happens to be right behind my house. A developer purchased the single-family property this summer. And apparently, they have...they're on their third wave of proposals to Planning and Zoning Department to try to get this through. The current proposal is for 10 townhomes. They're calling it five buildings, but it's 10 single-family townhomes on a single-family lot. I, as an Inglewood resident since 1997, feel it is completely inappropriate to even ask something like this when it's a change from single-family to a PUD. I've spoken with the neighbors on my block and several other blocks behind. They all hope to attend the meeting Thursday evening to, you know, find out exactly what the proposal is. But what they've submitted thus far is just absolutely beyond comprehension. They're three stories high. And again, it's on a single-family lot. We just don't need that in Inglewood. Everything in my area is single-family, large lot. This is a larger lot than some of the others.
Thank you. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Seeing none, we will move on. And there will be response to the public comment shortly. Thank you. And last, we have, last but not least, Idemay Nichols, coming to speak about the memorial and rezoning.
Good evening. I live at...my name is Idemay Nichols. I live at 4740 South Le Pen Street. I am also piggybacking off of, actually, Doug on the memorial. That's what I came here to speak on originally. But there's little flyers in the back. It's a remember the date. And anyone that wants to sign up for a paver, we would really appreciate that. It honors all of those servicemen that served for us. And also, it's really good for our city. I spoke a couple of weeks ago, and I spoke before that, and I'll be here again. But I actually want to piggyback on the...with Cindy Powders on what they're going to develop over there. I don't live on that street, but I live right around the corner. And she gave you a map here. And all of these houses that are up here, there's no alley there. There's no road there. These great, big, tall condos, or whatever they're called, are going to be in front of these homes. And these are nice homes, but they're not tall homes. They're not like...they don't have an upstairs. They're all like, you know, on a single floor. And it's going to cut off all their view. And so you figure it's going to be 10 residents. So you figure about 20 cars. Where are they all going to park? And how's the trash man going to get in to get the trash? Is that all going to be sitting on the street? It may not affect me. I don't know. But I think that families have to stand together. And if I lived over here, I would really think it would affect me a great deal. The other thing that I was... The other thing that I was not happy with, this company that got the information out, they didn't get it out over to where I live at all, and I just live around the corner. So I think they didn't do their complete homework, they could have been better. And I'll probably speak more on this when I have more time, because I just found out about it, because it didn't come to my home. Otherwise, I would have been working over in her block and helping. And I helped to do that, because I think we need to stand up for our neighbors if they live across town. Those that are getting pushed around, I think they need help from their other neighbors across town, so I'm going to work around the block and help. So thank you for allowing us to speak this evening.
Thank you, Idemay. Are there any questions for Idemay? Seeing none, we will move on to council response to public comment. Would someone like to address? Councilmember Berentine?
I want to thank the, everybody who came from the community, and I hope you understand why we can't address any of the comments regarding the PUD piece of it, including, I don't think it's wise at this time to comment on the PUD piece that's coming forward until maybe later after we've decided on the previous one. But I do appreciate your concern. Idemay has been in this community a long time. I appreciate Cindy Powder coming forward as well, and certainly we'll have some conversations as the issue comes forward. Doug, I just, you get up there, and I can imagine what it looked like back in the 20s, and I think I would have looked good as a flapper, so I kind of, I kind of love getting immersed back in what Inglewood was doing and kind of the wild, we were still a little bit Wild West back then sometimes, but we had a lot of, as we do today, as the applications for District 1 shows, we have a lot of very skilled, very talented, very creative, smart people living in this community, and it's nice when they come and share that with us and bring that forward. So thanks for reminding us that we have a long, rich history of it. I appreciate, again, Kathleen Bailey, for your coming and bringing the information. Looking forward to seeing the rest of the presentation that you are going to be making. And to Jeff Frazier, I appreciate that you've recognized that it's been a very transparent process, and I think that regardless of, I think in the end, the council will make the very best decision we can, and if the very best decision is that it goes to an election, it will be the very best decision that we could have come to. I don't think, I don't think anybody ever wants to see an option like that happen, but when you have somebody who served for 10 years, as now Judge Joe Jefferson did, we want to make sure that we include everybody, and that's a very difficult decision. I think in a lot of our hearts, we would have liked that the people made this decision, and that's, it is the way it is, but this council has done a wonderful job and worked very well together to get this far. So I have all the hope that we will do the very best thing we can for District 1 and for this community. So thanks for your recognition of the transparency in the process. It was hard, but I think it was well worth it. That's all I have.
Councilmember Questa?
Yes. I too would like to thank Mr. Brand and Ms. Rhodes for attending this evening. Ms. Bailey, it's always informative, and I appreciate the information. I too look forward to the information to come. Mr. Cohn and Ms. May, thank you for bringing this Military Memorial to the attention of everyone. I've already got a candidate in mind that would make one of the great bricks, and I think should be a name on the wall, so thank you. Mr. Frazier, I appreciate the encouragement. Hopefully, we can get there tonight. And to Ms. Powders, I really appreciate the grassroots organization getting out of the neighborhood, knocking on doors. I did have some other neighbors express concern that they were not informed. My understanding is there's a thousand-foot bubble essentially that they need to contact within those 1,000 feet, so I think that that's something that maybe should be revisited by council as well for future developments. And for those unaware, that meeting is Thursday night, 6:00 PM, at the Inwood Recreation Center, 115 West Oxford Avenue. There's definitely been a lot of interest thus far that I've seen on Nextdoor and one Facebook group as well. I am going to do my best to record the meeting as well, and then hopefully get it on YouTube for anybody that can attend, just so that they can watch it after the fact and see the comments that were made. So anybody that's interested in the matter, one way or another, Thursday night at 6:00 PM would be a great opportunity to express your voice and answer, or excuse me, ask questions as well. So again, thank you for the participation, I certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Questa. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. I wanted to thank everyone who came tonight, and I also wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Questa said. It's a public meeting, not a public hearing, it's a neighborhood meeting, so there will be another opportunity after that, once Planning and Zoning gets further along in their process. So please stay in touch with all of them, I'm sure that you will be because of your interest in it. I just don't want it to be seen as the one-time-only time, but many times is the best, so these processes take time. And the second thing I wanted to thank, Mr. Frazier, for coming tonight, and thank you for helping us remind ourselves, which we've been doing, that this is really about getting the best person to create a great team up here to work together and find ways to do some creative things and problem-solve together. With that in mind, I want to remind everybody that we did have a study session right before this, where we began that process. So if you were not here earlier, there is a recording of that, so we began our conversations about candidates during that time, and we will be finishing at least the portion for this evening tonight, not finishing perhaps, we don't know for sure. We'll come to some final consensus tonight, but at the very end of the meeting, it's on our schedule to talk about the District 1 candidates and where we are. And hopefully, we will come to an agreement together, and we'll not need to go out to do a special election, but if we have to, that's what we will do to make sure that you get heard and fully get to make that decision. Thank you.
I too would like to thank all of you for coming and making the information known to us. We greatly appreciate it, and I won't belabor it anymore, since three council members have responded already. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 8, Communications, Proclamations, and Appointments. Item 8A, we are going to consider a motion to appoint Associate Judge Vincent Aratencio. Presiding Judge Joe Jefferson would request that the council appoint by resolution Vincent Aratencio to serve a four-year term as an Associate Judge for the City of Inglewood, commencing January 17, 2018, and expiring January 16, 2022.
Madam Mayor Protam and Honorable Counsel, my pleasure to be in front of you. Again, as was just stated, I am requesting that we appoint by resolution Vincent Aratencio to serve a four-year term as Associate. I would note, however, I do believe this, you know, term should probably commence as of the 16th and expire on the 15th of 2022. I'm not sure if you actually have a copy of that resolution in front of you, or if this is verbal and committed with the oath? An actual resolution included in your packet there?
The recommendation says the same thing. Let's see the resolution.
Did you see an issue with that? Do I get a resolution to bring it up?
Yes. The resolution is put up.
But, you know, I would like to just go ahead and do the swearing-in this evening, post the approval of the resolution, if we were honored with such.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and take the new Joe, Judge Joe Jefferson's recommendation for appointing former Judge Intencio as a hearing officer and judge.
Associate judge.
Associate judge, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'm just too flabbergasted by this turn of events in a week here that you are now swearing him in.
No, we've decided that the theme of this evening, both for myself, as well as former Judge Intencio, and soon-to-be Judge Intencio, it feels weird to call him Mr. Intencio, so I'll call him that, is just when you think you're out, they pull you back in. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you.
Fire's remorse.
All right, thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
No, I think this actually makes sense.
Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Madam Mayor Protam, with your permission, I approach the dius for the swearing-in.
Yes.
Coming up, sir. If you'd raise your right hand. Hi, Vincent Aratencio.
Hi, Vincent Aratencio.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of California.
The Constitution of California.
And charter and ordinance of the City of Inglewood.
And the charter and ordinance of the City of Inglewood.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of office.
Faithfully perform the duties of office.
As in Associate Missable Judge.
Associate Missable Judge.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Back in, sir.
Congratulations.
Due to the other information, please.
Was it only a week he stayed away, seriously?
Mayor Protam, if you don't mind, I'd like to say a word, just to thank you for being willing to do this. What a great opportunity to continue on the legacy and help to bring in and develop a new judge and hopefully find some new ways to work, so I appreciate your staying in the game.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. I also want to congratulate the Wolf, Mr. Walk Wolf, on his promotion there to Assistant City Manager, and thanks for having me again.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8B, Appointment of Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood Alternate Member to Regular Member. The Chair for Alliance of Commerce in Inglewood recommends City Council appoint alternate member Nathan Hoag as a regular member to fill the vacancy created by Richard Langdon when he resigned. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Agenda Item 8C, Appointment of Board of Adjustment and Appeals Alternate Member to Regular Member. The Chair of Board of Adjustment and Appeals recommends that City Council appoint member Aaron Rieger to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals vacancy created by member Sue Purdy's term, expiring February 1, 2018. Further, Ms. Purdy is term-limited and ineligible for reappointment to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any comments?
Can you see?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. I'm going to move that to the other side. Councilmember Olson?
Yes, thank you. Sue Purdy has been in this for a long time, and she's not only in my district but a neighbor, and I really want to, I know she isn't here tonight, but I want to thank her for a long, long term of, sets of terms of service, so I appreciate that kind of citizen engagement.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Agenda Item 8D, the Appointment of Inwood Transportation Advisory Committee Member to Regular Member. The Chair of the Inwood Transportation Advisory Committee recommends City Council appoint alternate member Neil Sarno as a regular member of the Inwood Transportation Advisory Committee to fill the vacancy created by Peter Smith when he resigned. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Oh, wait, did we need a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Thank you.
Cheryl, link.
Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
And Agenda Item 8E, Resolution Appointing Members to Boards, Commissions, and Committees for the City of Inglewood. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, is there any discussion? Councilmember Olson?
This is on E, right?
Yes.
I would like to pull out just one name, one board, and that would be the, let's see, I'm looking for an actual, 7C, and could see us moving forward with the rest.
Are you amending?
Yeah, I would like to ask for an amendment to the voting to pull 7C out and vote on that and talk about that separately.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
One second.
Okay, is there discussion on the amendment?
The reason for this is because it's become to our attention that this is someone who we're a little bit concerned about because of the felony background of the person and still on probation, I believe, parole, and that perhaps there's a significant risk for the city or for us individually, and I'd prefer to pull this one out and talk about it separately and consider it and let the others go on.
Okay, any further discussion? Please vote on the amendments.
Yes. I'm sorry, I keep passing my wrong.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
We have never had a, the Board and Commissions' application does not require that anybody disclose whether they are convicted of a felony or not, or whether they are on probation or parole or not, and neither does the, actually, the applications we put in for City Council or for the applications that we did for the City Council members that we just interviewed, or for the people that are sitting on this dius right now. So I have a problem with that being identified as somehow a requirement for somebody rather than somebody's personal adherence to whatever obligations they have outside to keep. So I'm a little confused that that's being brought up as some requirement at this point for consideration, because we may have other people currently serving on a border commission somewhere that have a felony conviction, or are on probation, or have some restriction that they have not shared with us, and if we take a move like this, I think we are opening ourselves up for some problems, since it was not a requirement of the application.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I'd like to ask the city attorney to speak to this, if you would, in terms of what we should or could not, and what our responsibility is here to the community. And I guess what I'm asking for is to talk about it and, outside of the rest, and move forward on it, but if you're saying that you don't want to do that, you want to continue, so.
No, that's not what I was saying. What I was saying was, aside from somebody individually.
Right.
Aside from somebody individually, what I'm talking about is process and procedure here, and that it is not a requirement, neither of council nor on any border commission for the application, that we would be made aware of anybody's standing, or what commitment they're making outside of that. If, if we put ourselves in a position where we believe that we take on the onus of the liability or the behavior of anybody on a border commission, then we put ourselves in, I think, a tenuous spot, since we have not made that a requirement of the interview process or the application process, and therefore, if we have anybody currently sitting on boards and commissions, they would have to come out and be voluntarily out themselves, or we would have to start some process where we background-checked people, and instead of making it the requirement and responsibility of the individual to garner their behavior and their obligations with whatever agency they may have an obligation with, we are starting to take that on, and I am concerned about it.
Kind of process, Mayor Protam. I'd still like to continue with the question I was asking, if I might.
Right, but you asked her, and she responded, so yes.
Yeah, so I am, I'm going to continue with that, asking if you can give some response in particularly the situation. This is a, this may be the first
Yes. This is a, this may be the first time this council's been presented with this issue. This gentleman clearly wants to be a volunteer, and the council really likes to support all members of the community being actively involved. This gentleman did provide this information in a, basically, he made this information available to the City Council, I believe, in 2016 as part of a lawsuit he filed against the city. And so the City Council, the majority of the City Council, if not all of the City Council, is aware at this time that this individual is a convicted felon but is also still serving a term of parole, that there are some restrictions of the parole. And how that parole would apply to how this individual served on a board or commission remains unknown. We just don't have a policy or procedure in place. For example, and again, this gentleman is very open about his background. He doesn't try to hide it from anybody. But if individuals are not aware that he's currently required to register, what is, we're not certain, does that require us as a city to post the meeting room to make sure that children do not go into the meeting room, to make sure that the meeting room remains child-free to be in compliance with his parole? Is that going to prohibit other individuals in the community from feeling like they can openly go to that particular border commission? These are questions that we don't have a policy in place and are not prepared to answer. Whether or not there are other individuals who are currently serving on a border commission who are convicted felons and are still on parole, we don't know. They have not made that information available. But this gentleman did, which means that you're moving forward with knowledge, which makes it a different situation. So for that reason, it is something to consider. But my legal advice, you've had attorney-client privileged legal advice on that matter. At this point, I think it is incumbent on you to make a policy decision about how to handle this particular situation or maybe similar situations that come forward in the future.
Are you through, Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, not quite. So I, so my understanding is because of, we are in full knowledge and have had a number of interactions with this person around the issue that convicted him and his place in our community, and that that would be, that knowledge is what we're held accountable for.
Yes.
The fact that someone else might be serving on a commission with a felony with similar things, we would not be held as accountable, we would not be held at all accountable for, or it would be a judgment call on some judge?
If there is a person currently serving on a border commission who is convicted offender, and again, I, this gentleman is very open with his background, but if someone who's convicted of this particular offense is currently serving a term of parole and is hiding it from the city, that's one set of facts. But this gentleman has not hidden it from the city. So if there's never an issue, then there's never any liability. If there is an issue, you know, that's something you have to question. So the fact that you are aware of his, of his background, I think, puts this in a different category of circumstances. Whether or not there needs, and I think Councilmember Berentine was exactly right when she said, "We are not asking this of other volunteers or commissioners." And I think that that's the question that this gentleman is unknowingly brought before the council is, should we have a way of addressing this so that we feel like we're doing our best to treat everybody identically? And again, that's a policy decision that the council's going to have to make.
So in this case, particularly at this time, we could decide on this one and then develop a policy later regarding this?
That could be one way of moving forward. And you could talk to him specifically about what the requirements are in the city for modifying the area or any changes that we might have to make in order to make sure the area conforms to the terms of his parole.
Then I guess a follow-up question in this could be for the clerk would be, our role right now in the midst of this decision, should we be talking about the other issues related to it, or should we rule on whether he's on or off, whether we pull that one out and then talk about it? It's more of a procedural thing, I think I'm asking for maybe the city clerk, whether we should, because I have more to say on this, but should we just wait until it's pulled out or not? Does it matter?
I think that you need to go on the amended motion and then pull it aside, and then we can put it back into the resolution.
Okay, and I think we have one more comment on that, and then we can vote on the amended motion. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I'm glad we're talking about this. I would prefer to pull this one out of here, move forward on this, and then talk about developing some policies around this topic separate from tonight's discussion. So I would like us to discuss this further as a council and put some policies around kind of what this could look like going forward. Like, our city attorney has mentioned.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine, and then I'll take Councilmember Olson.
I have a concern about putting a sum for more liability on this issue. We have a court case that's going forward because of comments that were made on this dais, and then that council person was called into court, and the very registry that outed these people to go ahead and say anything is under, has been deemed unconstitutional by the court because of some actions and things that this council has done. If that is upheld and the sex offender registry goes away, then the only decision for applying to the board will be the same as it is for anybody else on parole. It will be a decision between them and their parole officer and/or their probation officer. And we will push people into hiding and not being honest. And I think this is a slippery slope to go down. We have already caused enough problems to the victims and actions ill-thought-out on this dais before that look punitive and meant to go ahead and further cause judgment on individuals instead of situations. So I am very disappointed about this. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Olson?
To me, this isn't, this is a question about us coming to some conclusion about how we're going to deal with this going forward and not about the person in particular. And because it's been raised as a, as a legal issue for the city and risking for us personally, that is why I'm bringing this up. I think it's been pretty clear where I've stood on the issue itself in wanting to have a fair and open society and an open place for everyone to be here and to be serving.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. City Attorney Brown, you did mention terms of parole. Has council been, provided that document yet to review those terms ourselves?
No, and I don't have a copy of the terms of parole. I have been verbally told about one term of the parole, but I didn't request a copy.
And who provided you that term verbally?
I reached out to the detective at the police department and asked if, what knowledge he had. He reached out to the parole officer and specifically asked the parole officer what terms might interfere with this particular individual being on a border commission. So we just have the one term that was provided by the parole officer. But I have not spoken directly to the parole officer about it.
Which jurisdiction is that parole based out of?
It's the state of Colorado.
Do you know which law enforcement agency oversees it?
He is registered in the city of Inglewood, so his parole officer would be within Arapahoe County.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Seeing none? Actually, I think that I do have a question before we move on. I understand that if he violated his parole, it would be a liability to the city. But also, if he violates his parole, it would be a liability to him. And so, I mean, given the fact that he came and spoke before this council a year and a half very openly, he made, he made a huge mistake that sent him to prison. And he would go back, I'm sure, if he violated his parole. I don't know that. I guess I can't say that. So anyway, just consider that. With that, did you want to make a comment, Councilmember Olson, before we vote?
Yeah, I think it's more of a, this particular case is difficult because we all know the person had been involved in a process here, and so it's difficult. What I'm concerned about is openness and transparency in meetings and restricting meetings in any way. And I'm not sure we vetted that all out. It may be that this can still work out. I would like to pull it out, figure that out together, and then move forward. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay, all right. With that, let's vote on the amendment. Would you remind us what the amendment is?
So Councilmember Olson, there was a motion to amend to remove 7C to be considered independently, is how I interpreted that motion.
Okay, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, five ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Berentine.
Okay, so now we need to...
Move on to approve all the rest.
Move on, right, okay. Move on to approving all of the rest. Is there a motion? Or do we, we already had?
We just amended it, yes. Now we just need to vote on that.
All right, so vote on the original amendment to approve the list.
Minus C, seven.
Minus, yes, minus, minus 7C.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six eyes.
Thank you very much. And now we need to go back, correct, and deal with the 7C. Is there a motion to, we haven't, we're just talking about whether, help.
At this time, the gentleman who was listed as 7C, his name's been pulled off for separate consideration. You've already approved the other resolutions, so at this point, you can open up for discussion to decide what action you would like to take on this matter moving forward.
In that case, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, in order to do the discussion that we approve Brian Brockhausen for the Store of Preservation Commission.
Is there a second?
So we're not even going to have the discussion?
Second. Can the mayor second a motion? Okay, I will second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Olson?
So here, I, you know, I've thought through a number of things that could happen with this, just procedurally and logistically. We have someone on the registry, and we've had people on this board that just recently resigned to often bring a child to the meetings or to other meetings. And so I, I just want to know that there's some process in place to make sure that the person who wants to be on this board is fully protected, as well as the city and anyone else who wants to come to a meeting, anyone else who wants to be engaged. That's my major concern. I cannot guess at what someone will or will not do and how anyone will respond to anything. I don't even want to go down that road. That's not what this is about for me. So I would prefer to find out, get more information, if it's possible, if that's even legally possible, to figure out what would be all of the possibilities on this to make sure that everyone is, everyone, including the person who we put on this board as an idea, is protected and is safe in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I really liked the example Councilmember Olson shared. I think we need to figure out a way to make this very clear and very respectful of everyone in our community so that we're not, we're making sure everyone who wants to attend meetings would be able to attend meetings. It has nothing to do with this individual. But anyone who has a felony and may be on parole, we don't want to also, by kind of side effect, have any, anything to do with them violating a parole requirement, which we don't know anything about what that is. So I think in order to be fair and respectful, I think we should explore this more and maybe just look at possible policies around how we would handle that if something like this comes up again, as it will.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. There's a lot of speculation here. We've not seen the terms of the parole. I actually think this is very late in the conversation to be having this discussion. This should have been brought forward way earlier. This is very last minute to me. If there were concerns, I think those should have been expressed prior. If there were documents we should have reviewed regarding parole, we should have seen those a long time ago. So I am disappointed at the point at which we're having this discussion. Secondly, he applied Aaron Square, just like everybody else did. He has been very forthcoming. I think we need to get him an answer, one way or another. The notion that we explore it and we talk about it some more, I don't think is fair to him nor to the process. I'm surprised at how this is unfolding now here at this moment. And on that notion of the parole terms, when will we get to see those so we can quit speculating on what somebody can or cannot do, who can or cannot be in a room?
I haven't asked for a copy of those, so if I'm directed to reach out and ask for a copy, I guess that I could and see that I, see if I could get a copy of those terms.
And I will hand this back over to Councilmember Olson and Martinez. I don't see how we can move forward without that document. How can we set these parameters without even knowing what the parameters are?
I would agree. And this, this is not what I was thinking of a week ago either. So the timing of this, there is no, I mean, I, now, you know, hindsight is, you know, if you know anything about a hindsight with, with the gun, it's what helps you see clearly. And the hindsight was not there for understanding probably another question or two could have been asked that evening to figure out some of this. And that's where I feel kind of caught in this at this point, given the new information or counsel that we received.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine? Okay, Councilmember Wink?
I think many of us have raised very, very good points here tonight. I personally would like to see us resolve this in a, in a separate session due to the sensitive nature of the topic. I also want to say that, that we end up making, coming to a decision that is in the best interest of our city, which includes all citizens. Let's keep that as paramount in our, in our discussion. And, and within that, I would like to reiterate a point that was made earlier, I believe by Councilmember Olson regarding the transparency with which we conduct our, our council, our council activities today, and that I think it very important that we do not change that in any way or lessen the visibility of our activities outside of executive sessions and other sessions, of course, that are by nature that way, to the citizenry. And so, sure, if, if there are certain meetings that, that members or public tend to go to or would like to go to and bring young children or children or any other group that might be more susceptible, given the circumstances around this, or any future circumstances similar where there are felonies involved, let's think very carefully about that as we think of our decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
This isn't the first time this gentleman applied for a board, so I do share your frustration with that. I don't think this should have been a surprise because people bringing up that, you interviewed him before. We sat here for close to two years and listened to the people responsible, the people responsible for keeping us safe, the police, the Sex Offender Management Board, the parole officers, the probation, the parole board, the probation officers. And they all came and told us the process and procedures that they use, that they feel responsible for, the plans that they make, lie detectors, the follow-up, the requirements in order for somebody to be in our community... in order for somebody to be in our community. And an additional requirement for us, and the reason it came to us was because we are only one of six communities that also enforced residency restrictions. Children come to council meetings. He was allowed to council meeting. We didn't do anything special. We didn't close the doors. We didn't lock the place down because he was here and a child was here. That was between the arrangements that were made and the people that are already responsible to keep us safe. They made those arrangements. Children go to church, children go to the store. All of those issues are being handled to keep our community safe because he is by no stretch of the imagination the only person that's on the sex offender registry in this community, a registered sex offender. And they take it very serious, their job to keep us safe. For us to single out the position of a board or commission as if that now is our responsibility to dictate people's behavior and keep people safe is a dangerous slippery slope for us to go down. We do not require on that application, we don't have the discussion with anybody else, and the fact that somebody has made it clear because of other issues that came up, what was, that that situation is there and to couch this in that somehow we are again responsible for protecting people instead of allowing people to do their job. And it appears that the probation officer has approved this. We made no special arrangements in this chamber when he testified, week after week after week, and all of his neighbors in support of him. We made no special arrangements in this building or in this chambers for him to come and speak. We didn't ask if there would be children present or not present. We trusted the police and the probation department and the Sex Offender Management Board and the parole officers to go ahead and do their job. And for us to go ahead and single out one person as if we are going to go ahead and vet whether this person is safe or not and then put us in a position that if we do vet him enough and then make a decision to put him on a board, that somehow now we are responsible for his behavior and his future actions is ludicrous. And I think it's a dangerous thing for us to do. It's arrogant. Were we not protecting the public for a year and a half, every single time he walked in that door and came in here and there were children here? Are you saying that we had some obligation at that time, that we were irresponsible and that we didn't care about our neighbors and other citizens?
Mayor Protam, could I ask that we come to some conclusion on this? I think we've heard quite a bit in perspective, what I'm...
Is that what you wanted to?
No, I do have some things.
Okay.
But you're finished.
All right, would you finish?
I share what Councilmember Questa. I find it very suspect and I'm very disappointed in the way that this is being brought up. He applied before. He's been very open about what's going on, and I think that as a policy, we are getting very dangerous ground.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
This, I want to tell the public and you that this is not something that I was scheming about at all before I came. We received counsel this last week on what this could mean for the risk for the city and for those of us personally, and that is what I'm taking responsibility for. This is not about anything, any other agenda. I'm on record as, this is a separate issue than where people can live in the city. I'm, I think I'm on full record that I believe anyone can live anywhere in our city regardless of their felony. So, I, this is not about that. That's already been determined by our city, by the city council that was formed to do that decision. This is about whether or not there is risk to the city and personally to us, and figuring that out. And if we don't believe there is and we want to go against any kind of counsel we've received, that's a choice that we can make. But it is my responsibility, and I believe everyone's responsibility here to get information that we are given, however late that it is, as long as it's not outside of the parameter of a public hearing, that we take it into consideration and talk about it in as much open way as we can. So, I don't know whether we need to go into an executive session at some point to come up with some kind of belief in this. This is not about the person to me at this point. It's about whether or not the city and personally those of us sitting here are at risk.
Can I ask the attorney one question, please? Since it's been brought up that, you know, whether we take your advice or not and that that advice would be ultimately keeping the citizens safe, may I ask why the issue, since he has been in attendance numerous times in this building, why that issue was not brought up before?
Probably because it's just not on my radar, and you know that I sat through the city council interviews last week when those came up, and it was then that I became aware that he was applying. And I am charged, whether I like it or not, I am charged with telling my client, the city council, if there's a possibility of a legal issue. I'm required to do that, and it does not always make all of us comfortable, but I had to tell you. Whether and how you want to use that information, that is totally your choice.
So, now that that is out, I have a part two to that question. Since he regularly attends a city council meeting and with the statements that you've made, then would we be obligated to go ahead and take similar measures to go ahead and keep the public safe when he attends council meetings?
The one term of parole that his parole officer made known to us isn't about going to church or going to public meetings. It's about volunteering in a situation in which he can come into contact with children. He's not here as a volunteer, but what the appointment is about being a volunteer, so it's a different set of facts than that.
When we find out information, if we take that path, we might, I mean, I think we need to know because I do think that's come up now. And if we're aware of the situation and we're allowing it, and, I mean, we put people down to speak and we know they're going to be attending, then I think that anything we come up for the board and commission piece for this might impact that. So, I want that to be aware because I think we're going down a place where, I want to know whether we're going down a place that somebody says, now you're aware that that's it, and I went to a council meeting and there were kids there, or there's the possibility, and I want to know that we're not getting into that. You need to look at that as well.
Yes, if we become aware that it's a term of someone's parole, that they could not come to this type of meeting, we would be required to keep them out of the meeting. I have no reason to believe that that's a term of this individual's parole. The only thing I know is about the volunteer status, and because of that, this was brought to your attention.
Did you contact the parole officer or probation officer yourself, or it was through the police?
I contacted our police department and they reached out.
So, you have not talked to, okay. That's fine.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Questa?
And I will be brief. Thank you, Mayor Protam. In matters such as this, where there is potential liability for the city, and even beyond this one, whatever the subject matter might be, more forewarning, I think, would be helpful for everyone so that we can consider, we were within a couple clicks of, you know, proceeding here, and there may be some liability. And so, I think that the more forewarning we can get on that in consideration, the better. And I certainly, absolutely think you're absolutely sincere on that, Councilmember Olson, that this came to you late as well. I think this is coming to everybody late, but this is, this feels very last minute, and this is a tough way to have this conversation. Thank you. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. Yeah, we all got this information at the same time. I think it was one day last week in our attorney-client materials. And I think we really need to be mindful about trying to make a policy around the situation for one individual. We're not, I don't want to do that. I want to have it more broad and more umbrella and not, you know, find out this one particular individual's stipulations of his parole and make a whole policy around that. It needs to be a much more general than that. But this is what has brought, this situation has brought to our attention what we, what we need to do and have a discussion around it. So, I want to be really careful not to just, it's not about this one individual. It needs to be much more broad than that. But I think we should have another discussion, obviously, how we're going to handle it going forward, if we're going to make a policy around it or whatever. But I don't think that's going to be decided this evening.
Okay, thank you. And I, I do have a question for the city attorney. I personally believe we haven't had a policy, and so our lack of policy right now makes it appear as though we are singling out one individual, and it's because we haven't dealt with this. My question for the city attorney is, is it possible to get the conditions of his parole and who is responsible? I mean, what his parole officer is. Can we get answers to those questions and reconsider appointing him on February 5th?
I can't answer you positively. I don't know the answer to that question. I do know that if you ask or if you direct staff to see if we can get some of that information, we can certainly bring it back to the best of our ability. And I need to be clear, I'm not trying to tell you what to do. I'm trying to make sure that you're informed so that you can make the best choices for this council.
Okay.
Mayor Protam, might I make a suggestion?
Okay.
I would like to, and I do appreciate that there was a second to this because the, what I was being told was at least you wanted to have a discussion. So, thank you very much for seconding it, and I appreciate that we had a discussion. I would like to withdraw my motion at this time in order to go ahead and get some additional information then and allow everybody a little bit more time to look at the information that's been brought forward, as Councilmember Olson believes that it was rather short notice, so we can have some more robust discussion on it. So, I'm willing to go ahead and withdraw my motion at this time and go ahead and just postpone the vote.
Okay, I will withdraw my second. And so then, do we need to table this or?
Yes, if you'd like to, you can certainly table it.
I'll withdraw the motion so that I can table it to the February 5th. That's fine. If that gives everybody enough time.
Councilmember Olson?
Do we have to create a motion to do that, or can we leave it like this?
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we passed, we pulled that agenda item, and I think that we can either motion to table to a date specific, or we can just bring forth a new resolution for that appointment of that particular person and spot.
In the future, when we're ready, or, so I'm, the reason why I'm asking is I'm concerned Councilmember Questa raised a good point of we don't want to leave someone hanging and we're kind of in an odd situation that we've never encountered.
We can bring a single resolution forward to appoint that person. So, that would be my suggestion, but you're also welcome, I mean, we've already passed this resolution with all the board's appointments. So, I think that after discussion or after deliberation, then we can bring forward a single resolution appointing to that position.
Could we get, could the staff get the information that we need about the conditions of his parole? And then, if we can get that information, go ahead and bring this forward on February 5th?
I think what you're asking us to do is a little bit more than that. It's not just get the conditions of his parole because that doesn't, that's difficult for those of us who don't work in that field to interpret. But I think what you're asking us to do is to reach out to this gentleman and meet with him and basically see if any, if there are any specific concerns or if you can answer some of these questions, and let him work with us to see if we can come up with a, with an answer that makes everybody feel comfortable that they're making the right decisions for this gentleman as well as the city as a whole.
What time, what does that timeframe look like to you?
I think that if, if this matter's being brought back February 5th, we'll reach out to him immediately, see if we can get something, get as many answers as possible by February 5th.
Okay, is that?
I've withdrawn my motion and you've withdrawn your second. That's fine.
Okay, Councilmember Olson?
That would be my council request for us all, that you do the best you can and your staff to find out as much as we can by then so it happens more quickly than drag. I don't want to drag on for him personally. I'd prefer we get it dealt with and then move on if we have to make some other kind of changes in our policy, thinking of the larger issue. So, I appreciate your being patient with this. So, this was not what I expected to be doing tonight either.
I was very stunned by it, but I appreciate your patience and at least having the discussion so I could wrap my head about it. It's greatly appreciated.
I think it was more about the way it was worded. It sounded like we were approving him, so if we just, yeah, so it's just, it was more that than anything else.
We can move on now. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item 9, Consent Agenda Items and 9C, Resolutions and Motions. Independent Hearing Officers: Staff recommend city council approve by resolution a list of attorneys available to serve as independent hearing officers when the services of an independent hearing officer are required by Charter or Inglewood Municipal Code. Our staff source is City Attorney Allison McKinney-Brown.
Consent Agenda. So, I move to approve Consent Agenda 9C1.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Barantine?
I actually greatly appreciate if in the future, going forward, you would continue to do what you were doing, and that's to read that Consent Agenda, it has come to our attentions, my attentions, since I have a tendency to pull some things, that the Consent Agenda at least be read on what we're doing instead of just by number. So, I appreciate that that's the format you would like to take, and that was all I had, that's all I had to say. I have no intention of pulling it.
Well, thank you. When there's 20, I might reconsider. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Olson?
No, I was going to affirm that and say you might want to consider when there's more, but I still say I affirm 9C1, and it's been seconded, so.
All right. Please vote.
All votes have been cast, let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. There are no public hearing items under Agenda Number 10. Agenda 11, Ordinances, Resolutions and Motions. 11A1, Approval of Ordinances on First Reading. 3333, 3323, 3317, South Pearl Street, Planned Unit Development. Approve a bill for an ordinance for 3333, 3323, 3317, South Pearl Street, Planned Unit Development. The staff source is Senior Planner Harold Stitt. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve 11A1.
Is there a second?
So, we're not going to discuss it either?
I'll second. I have a question.
Okay, so you're going to, you'll second, so we have a motion and a second. And Councilmember Martinez, do you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I was wondering if we're going to use that quasi-judicial hearing form that we talked about using together to decide on this?
Actually, I think what we're going to do, we all received that quasi-judicial form in our packet a week ago, and I think that it was a good tool for each of us to use and go through. And hopefully, you all did look at that and use it, but I don't want to use it...
Together.
Together. It's great that you used it for your, for your decision. I just want to remind us that because it is a quasi-judicial hearing, we have to decide according to the standards, the standards of the code are the basis for our decision. And actually, we were given, well, several things that we needed to use to make the decision. It was the recommendation of city staff, the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Department, the public hearing, and it seems like there was one other one. Is there any discussion on this? Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. I am going to try to be, in addition to the matrix, very in tune with the particular district that these are happening in and the representative of that district. Councilmember Olson, you were very enlightening last week in some of the comments you've heard, and this would, of course, apply to the at-large members as well. And City Attorney Brown, please interrupt me if I'm unable to solicit... And, City Attorney Brown, please interrupt me if I'm unable to solicit comment from them, but have you heard any new comments in your area, any more feedback from the neighborhood since our last meeting?
I'm just gonna talk.
Okay.
You are limited to the information that was presented during the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, any, Councilmember Olson?
And I just want to say that there were some people who wanted to give me more, and I told them that I cannot, there is nothing I can take now.
Thank you.
This is all new, and you all needed to hear it at the same time.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Olson?
So, what are you asking from us tonight on this? Mayor Protam?
We, the motion was to approve the resolution. Council, I have so many pieces of paper here, council can either approve, actually, City Attorney, would you remind us of what we can do?
Absolutely. With the quasi-judicial decision, which is the one you're dealing with tonight, the governing body has three choices. They can approve an ordinance, they can fail to approve an ordinance, which means the matter dies, or they can send the matter back to the Planning Commission for review, modification, changes that you might like them to look at. So, those are the three choices before the council this evening. Quasi-judicial decisions are made based upon the standards set forth in the code, you've all seen them in the Decision Matrix, everyone who's read our code has seen those, and they're also set forth in Section 1 of the ordinance, that the same exact six standards that the code requires. So, basically, if the members of the deciding body, which is yourselves, decide that all six standards of the city's code have been met, then it's a vote in favor of the ordinance. If you decide that any one of the six standards haven't been met, then it's a vote against the ordinance. So, it's very standard-driven.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilmember Berentine?
I have a question, on how, how does the discussion then go? What is the limitations to the discussion here? Because if we start to go through and say, this is why I agree or disagree, is that what we can do, and then have some conversation, or not?
Yes, you can discuss while you're voting. I would encourage you to remember, it's a quasi-judicial decision, very different from a legislative public hearing. In a legislative public hearing, you get to talk and convince each other, and, and all of that. Quasi-judicial, you're basically discussing which ones of the standards you believe have been met, and which ones of the standards you believe have not been met.
All right, thank you very much. And I would, I'll be happy to go first. I appreciated certainly the presentation that was made, and the, I share the Planning and Zoning Department's recommendation, that also stated that the design was very nice, it seems a very nice project, but I do not believe that it fits the standard for the PUD, in that the property cannot be developed, or no reasonable economic use of the property can be achieved under the existing zoning, even through use of additional uses or reasonable number of zoning variances. That does not necessarily mean that they have to be available, only that the property cannot be developed, or no reasonable economic use of this property can be achieved under existing zoning, and I believe, I believe that it can. It also came out that the property, as a whole PUD, is not under one ownership, and one design piece, and that was of some concern, in the going forward in making this one development piece. And those are the standards that I do not believe that it met.
Thank you, Councilmember Berentine. Would anyone else like to weigh in? Councilmember Martinez?
Well, thank you. I also agree with Councilmember Berentine, that it does not meet criteria number six, which is, the property cannot be developed, or no reasonable economic use of the property can be achieved, under the existing zoning, even through conditional uses and variances. So, for that, I will not be supporting this.
Councilmember Olson?
Sadly, number six for me is the clincher, and I just, I can see why Planning and Zoning did what they did, and the, this is a good example, I did come into the public hearing with an open mind, I didn't have one decision versus another, I think some people thought I did, but I didn't, and I often come into those with just really, I don't know what I would think on this until I hear some things, but having listened to the Planning and Zoning, and then hearing people the night of the, of the actual hearing, it doesn't, it doesn't quite sink with me, in, in making it all one, when you've got these single parcels, and it, it, I'm worried that it is not the way to go about trying to develop some of these areas, but it's such an amazing, I think, an amazing possible development, and so that's what's very hard about this for me. So, I will be voting no.
Thank you, Councilmember Wink?
I concur with my fellow councilmembers, and I side with the decision made by Planning and Zoning. I applaud the, the citizens for their hard work, and their planning, and that they're, that three different parcels of land ownership are collaborative to this extent, and have made such plans. However, I, I want us to be, be very steadfast in how we interpret our, our rules and law behind Planning and Zoning, and make exceptions when the exception is absolutely necessary.
Thank you, Councilmember Wink. Councilmember Questa?
This was a tough one for me. It is interesting to me that the, that the board reached a different conclusion than staff, and I'm still kind of putting those two together, I did go back and watch the hearing itself, and in my head, staff are the pros, these are the guys who should know exactly how it goes, and they recommended that this should go forward. And so, that is still a strange contrast to me, that we got varying recommendations from those two groups. I, I think it's a very sharp-looking development, I think that it looks great, and I agree that, I think that there's certainly potential there. Now, the concern that was raised with me at the hearing, that has kind of stuck with me, is that there might be another avenue to reaching this end, as opposed to the PUD. And I think that that is the issue that keeps giving me pause. So, I am going to align with my fellow councilmembers here, and I will be voting no at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Questa. Councilmember Olson?
Well, Councilmember Questa, you jogged my brain. What I, what I was going back to, was thinking, when you said that about, there's another way to get through this, is, could we send it back to Planning and Zoning, and ask them to come up with something that would work for this? And I don't know what that would look like at this point, because I know they've been round the block a million times on this, so I don't know if that's another way to go at this, and maybe we would need to ask our Planning and Zoning officers.
Councilmember Berentine?
I'm not sure that this is the time to debate that, I mean, I thought we were, I mean, emotions on there whether to approve or not, and we need to, so, but we were told there were three possible ways we could do it, approve, shut it down, or send it back to Planning and Zoning, so you're...
But the... The motion was that, so we'd have to vote yes or no to that, and then come up?
I think we put staff in an unfair position to start debating what options are, before we've made this decision. That doesn't make the options go away, but it does, I think it muddies the water for what we're doing right now, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wink?
I withdraw.
Okay, Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. And again, going back to the three choices, I would like to send this back to Planning, to see if there is another option. Now, the motion is a yes or no option?
I think, yes, it is now, because of the way the motion was made. I would like to weigh in on this also. I came into the public hearing with a totally open mind, and, and I was amazed at the, how it just came together. I do believe that Planning and Zoning was absolutely correct, when they said that the proposed development would be possible or practicable under a standard R2B zones district, and that the property can be developed, or that reasonable economic use of the property can be achieved, under the existing zoning, even through the use of conditional uses or administrative adjustments. And I, it is a great development, I'm not sure that it fits in that block, and so, I will be voting no, based on those reasons also. Is there a way to discuss the other thing that has come up, or do we need to vote on this?
We should vote on this current action, and then after this current action, because there, there were three choices, it's appropriate to take up one of the other options.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Olson, did you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, we could vote no on this, and then I could ask for us to reconsider it being brought, or ask that it be brought back to Planning and Zoning, to find some other, no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, then.
All right, please vote.
All votes have been cast, let the record show, six ayes.
Okay, Councilmember Olson?
So, I will then ask, I guess the, I would move to ask that the Planning and Zoning Commission work again with this project to find a third way.
Second? Any discussion?
Who gets a second?
Martinez.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to mention also that I did really like the designs of the, the units, but I think we can find a better solution to help you, the property owners, get what they're looking for, so, looking forward to seeing what else we can come, can come up with.
Councilmember Berentine?
The Planning and Zoning Board did a lot of work on this, and they did a good job. They are the people that we appointed for this, and they disagreed with staff, and they had some very good reasoning behind what they did. The other options that would be available to do this process would not be, I guess I'm confused about the comment about, we'll see how else they can work this out. The other options that were brought up during the public hearing, were to go ahead and do a rezoning, and that rezoning would include a much larger area, and other stakeholders than these three properties. And I don't want to give anybody false hope that we're sending this particular PUD, and that's what I think we would be voting on, is to send this particular PUD back to Planning and Zoning, when they voted it down, made their reasons very clear on why they were doing that, when the other option that was presented at the public hearing was a rezoning. And I think that that's a whole separate process, and not a mandate from this council to go ahead and send this PUD back to Planning and Zoning to rework it, as if there was some small little issue, that if they just tweaked it, they'd go ahead and, and we'd approve this PUD. That's not, I think, fair to the people who are presenting. The options that were presented are totally different zoning, and a totally different process, and it is a process of its own, and nothing stops them. They don't need a mandate from us to go ahead and do that piece of it, and I am concerned that we are sending a message back to Planning and Zoning, that we expect some slight tweaking of this would make a difference, and I don't believe that that's fair to either the people who are presenting, or to Planning and Zoning, because I don't think that's the case from what everybody's said here.
Councilmember Olson?
So, I heard tonight that we had three possible ways to deal with this, and the send back to Planning and Zoning was one of them. So, I don't know if we need to have someone from Community Development come up and explain to us the options of that, whether it is only a rezoning of the entire area, which I understand, and someone needs to initiate that from that area, or, or if there's something else. And I don't know if we want to take the time for that tonight, or what, but I, that's what I would prefer to hear.
I'm, I am, I am thinking, I actually agree with Councilmember Berentine on this. There has been some division between City Council and between Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning has, and not necessarily any fault of our own, but Planning and Zoning did spend a lot of time on this, and they have a lot of other things they want to move forward with. I, I think that we need to be careful about taking their time. I mean, I think staff has already got a lot of other things on their plate for Planning and Zoning also, and I do believe Planning and Zoning did do a thoughtful process on this, and I personally do not want to see it go back to Planning and Zoning, unless citizens initiate it. Councilmember Olson?
Would council entertain asking Harold Stitt, our staff person, to come up and speak to it for five minutes?
Councilmember Berentine?
I actually, I actually would object, because what we're, what we're discussing still is the same PUD we just voted down, and until something else can be brought forward, I think we're asking staff to continue to support what they already supported before, that we just voted down. I know it's hard to tell somebody no, I realize that piece of it, but we have, we have no process, we have a Planning and Zoning Board that has not met since September 9th, 19th. We have a division in who has control over what the agenda is, and what's going forward, and I would, actually was going to bring up, under Councilmember Choice, that we put a moratorium on any of the PUDs coming forward, until this council has a process, because I don't think it's either fair to the Planning and Zoning Board, the staff, and it's certainly not fair to people who are bringing PUDs forward to us. Another PUD issue has come up again tonight, and if we don't have some kind of process and format, we're just frustrating people bringing it forward, or we're frustrating the community. So, I think kicking the can back to Planning and Zoning at this point, for this particular PUD, is not a, is not a wise decision, or worth anybody's time right now. I mean, we need to have some more information, and have some discussion on how we want to move forward, and certainly get things straightened out with the Planning and Zoning Board, so that we can move forward a little better.
Councilmember Olson?
I'm unaware of our, having a division with Planning and Zoning, I think that we've worked very well together over the years, and this is an affirmation of them. I heard when we voted in the last round, that we could entertain a motion to do something differently, and that's all I'm doing, so I'm gonna call for the question that we ask Planning and Zoning to take another look at it.
Okay, so, there's been a call for the question, is council willing to go to the vote? Well, we'll take a vote on whether we will call the question, or we want to continue discussion. So, all in favor of calling the question, vote yes, those, and not in favor, vote no.
All votes have been cast, let the record show, six ayes.
Okay, would you remind me what the motion is on the table, please?
The motion that I have made by Councilmember Olson is to refer this back to Planning and Zoning.
Okay, so, and there was a second, correct?
Yes, it was seconded by...
So, please vote on whether to refer this back to Planning and Zoning or not.
All votes have been cast, let the record show, three ayes and three nays. Three nays being Councilmember Wink, Councilmember Berentine, and Mayor Protam Russell.
Okay, thank you.
That means it doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass, so, moving on to Agenda Item C, or 11C, Resolution And Motions, C1, Dry Gulch Floodplain Resolution. Staff recommends council approve a resolution acknowledging the submission... Staff recommends council approve a resolution acknowledging the submission of the Harvard Gulch and Dry Gulch flood hazard area delineation report to the Colorado Water Conservation Board. Our staff source is engineering manager Paul Weller. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Wanted to spend a minute and give a summary for the new members on what the process is of what you all have seen and what maybe they have not completely been a part of. Dry Gulch runs northwest from the intersection of Floyd University to Yale and Washington. It was an area that was identified as, area that would be flooded during a hundred-year storm back in 1988 and even further back in 1971, but the property's not been subject to any regulation or notification. In the years 2014, 2015, the residents in that area reported some severe flooding, essentially at intersection of Downing and Dartmouth to Cornell and Ogden, and they came to the city and asked for help. As we were looking into the, what we could do to help them, the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District reached out to us and asked if we wanted to participate in a major drainage plan for Harvard Gulch and Dry Gulch that the City and County of Denver was doing north of Yale. The major drainageway plan consists of a concept plan and a flood hazard area delineation. The concept plan that is, in the drainageway plan, was chosen by public input and by the city council. Essentially, the plan that was moved forward was a storm sewer that was capable of carrying the hundred-year flows and would remove, or would eliminate the, not eliminate, but greatly reduce the potential flooding of properties in this area. The consultants that prepared the design estimated that the storm sewer construction cost would be around $20 million. Two things, or one major thing with that is the need to coordinate with the City and County of Denver on their portion of the design to make sure that it was a continuous system. The city has requested and Urban Drainage has set aside $100,000 in their draft five-year plan to begin the design and to move forward, the city will need to match some of those funds, so that will be a discussion for another time. And the hundred-year storm sewer is basically the long-term solution, that's the ultimate solution. We're still looking for small projects, little things that we can do to maybe help with some of these areas. The flood hazard area delineation, or the FAD, is basically a mathematical model that looks at rainfall and how the topography of an area conveys that rainfall to a drainageway. It identifies risk, so it shows those areas that are at risk. Procedurally, the flood hazard area delineation plan is submitted to the state, to their Water Conservation Board for acceptance as a regulated floodplain. Then the state then asks the city to regulate it as a floodplain. There are times where the FAD then goes on to FEMA for, to be part of the National Flood Insurance Program. That is not the case with what we're doing with this until we get additional public input and approval from the city council.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but we have a member that's left the dais and I have to bring it to the mayor Protem's attention, so if we just either can take a break for five minutes or we can appoint him.
Let's take a five-
I think people can leave the dais, I don't-
Do they have to? I don't know, I think they're supposed to ask permission to leave the dais.
Absolutely.
So-
But it happens, so if we want to just break for five minutes-
Let's take a five-minute recess.
It may have been reasons that we don't know that somebody could not have, but, thank
I just visited it, there's a lot.
We'll be out of here by nine. Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
Not today.
We made ten, I'm surprised.
I just want to make sure.
There's a secret stash sometimes.
Where?
I just visited it, there's a lot.
Not a problem, we worked at the same-
Well, they have lots of-
Cheryl, I think we'll be out of here by nine. Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
Not today.
We made ten, I'm surprised.
We'll be out of here by nine.
Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
Not today.
We made ten, I'm surprised.
We'll be out of here by nine.
Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
Not today.
We made ten, I'm surprised.
We'll be out of here by nine.
Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
Not today.
We made ten, I'm surprised.
We'll be out of here by nine.
Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
Not today.
We made ten, I'm surprised.
We'll be out of here by nine.
Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
Not today.
We made ten, I'm surprised.
We'll be out of here by nine.
Our best hopes rarely come to pass.
And I am going to go too.
I called this meeting back to order. Mr. Weller, could you go on? We apologize.
Back up a little bit and explain that the flood hazard area delineation study is not being submitted to FEMA. That action won't happen until we get additional input from the public so that they understand what the effect of that action would be and then the approval of the city council. And until that time, the area will remain as a local, locally regulated floodplain, which is not an uncommon occurrence. The consequences of the FAD or the locally regulated floodplain, the city will be required to regulate this area per the Inwood Municipal Code, Chapter 16, Section 4, as a tool to help manage the risk that's been identified. Urban Drainage and Flood Control District will send out annual notification to the properties and the owners should disclose the floodplain designation, but there's no documentation that a mortgage company or prospective buyer would get through a normal procedure to understand that that property was in the floodplain. There would also be no change to flood insurance requirements, so a person that's in this area could get a preferred rate policy and pay the lowest rates as it's not included on the floodplain insurance maps. The state expects the area to be regulated as a floodplain or the city risks losing its standard, its standing with the National Flood Insurance Program and potentially funding for additional improvements and maintenance that is given to us by the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District. Public participation in this journey, November 25th, November of 2015, alternative plans for the conveyance of the storm water was presented in an open house that all residents were invited to. This led to the selection of the all-pipe option or the option that occurred, appears in the report. February 2017, we had a follow-up meeting to review the flood hazard area delineation with the public and discuss the consequences of that study and to discuss the submittal to FEMA. That was held in Hampden Hall, a full house. The meeting was attended by the design engineer, Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and FEMA, who all answered questions. Most of the discussion was on the insurance rates that would come with a FEMA submittal. And then finally, in November of 2017, the letter in tonight's packet was sent to owners and residents, so those properties that we could tell from county records that were not locally owned, we assumed that they were rentals and we sent letters to the resident there. We sent a total of 387 letters, approximately 12 returned primarily due to a vacant residence and those we resent to the current residents. As a result of those letters, I've gotten two calls from concerned residents and I've gotten one letter, which each one of you also got, from the resident at 3130 South Humboldt Street that asked several questions. So tonight, wanted to present this resolution that acknowledges the submission of the FAD to the Colorado Water Conservation Board. They will be meeting on January 22nd and 23rd to accept this report and authorize the regulation as a local floodplain. Your resolution signals the state, the city is aware of the pending designation and that the Inwood Municipal Code will need to be amended to include Dry Gulch as subject to the requirements of the floodplain rules. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for staff? Councilmember Berentine.
In this floodplain designation, you've gone over some insurance issues and some concerns. I wasn't, I wasn't sure whether it was inclusive enough on what the impact to the community was going to be. It kind of made me a little wary whether we've, you know, kind of vetted all of this and made sure that they knew. And I want to ask you in a, the proposed 2018 fee and rate changes, will there be any change to the cost for the permitting for this floodplain area if people do any work on their homes because they're in a floodplain?
I believe that there is an increase on the deck to do that and it represents basically time that we will spend as staff processing those.
Time, what additional time is there to processing a work permit that's in a floodplain?
There's, there's plan review, often several, several times that we review the plan after we recommend improvements or changes and essentially it's just capturing our costs.
In the current permitting costs though, you already review plans and you review plans sometimes several times. What's specific about the floodplain designation that makes it go up that much?
One thing that we are doing is the previous fee was split into two fees and what we are doing is we are combining those fees into one fee, so that may be one reason it looks like it's going up. The other is we've looked at what it's going to take for us to actually process one of these requests.
Specific to a floodplain area?
Yes, yes.
And what is it about a specific?
Councilmember Berentine, can I just make a suggestion? Can this, that discussion can actually-
Well, here's, here's the concern about that.
Point of order? I would like to hear what the mayor Protem was saying.
That discussion about the fee can be addressed during the fee schedule discussion and so those questions will come up. I'm, so if you want to go ahead and answer why-
This is specific to the floodplain.
To the floodplain itself?
And what I asked was, what is specific about the floodplain that makes that go up that much for the permitting? What is different about permitting for the floodplain area homes that makes their permitting go up that much?
Because it can be a very complex and complicated review. There's a lot of, a lot of engineering analysis, a lot of building elements that need to be reviewed, over and above what we would get on a normal building permit or a fence permit.
So I'm asking about the over and above, what that piece looks like, because what it made me aware of was that I believe that once we put this floodplain designation in, that there's some different process that you're going to do simply because they're in a floodplain and it is a significant increase in just that one little area, just that one little thing to permit for something that they're building. And I would imagine that the designation then would, that's what I'm asking, the question is what additional work you have to do because if you believe that you have to do additional work that to cover your costs, increase just a permit that much, I wonder how many other- I wonder how many other things are going to be put on these people by this designation, these other costs that maybe we haven't vetted totally yet? And that's why I was asking, what's the additional piece for the floodplain that caused that?
The floodplain designation and the review under the municipal code that's required for the floodplain development permit is designed to help manage risk. So we want to make sure that we have a complete and thorough review of the plans to make sure that, A, the applicant is protecting themselves, that they are not putting, not creating a situation to where they're increasing their risk, and we also need to make sure that they are not increasing the risk for others, because there are others, you know, their neighbors. So that brings about a much more complicated, much more complex, much more time-consuming review, which we try to capture in our fee.
And part of the reason that we had delayed, this process had been delayed was because of the concerns about the costs and making sure that people under that community, that hundred and forty homes or seventy-nine homes, I guess if it's expanded, it's hundred and forty, understood the additional costs with this. And so it just became clear that maybe we haven't done that as much as I had hoped we had. Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I could see how this could cost more. Do you have a sense of, will it vary just from property to property then? So it could slide, or do you think?
It will vary, depending on what the residence wants to do and where they are within, in the floodplain, whether they're in the floodway or they're on the fringe.
I'd imagine the style of their home.
There's a wide variety of things that it could do. There are things they can do, there are things that they probably can't do.
So that would probably change also, if they have a general contractor, or maybe they're doing it themselves, but that could make those prices go up as they try and do some kind of change in their home or re-
Again, we're managing the risk, we're making sure they understand that, what the risk is that they're taking.
Which is what the state will expect of you and expect of us as a city if we go ahead and affirm this. Even if we don't affirm this, they're going to be expecting this, aren't they?
Yes.
I mean, we'll be, yeah, so. I think that answers it.
Okay, I have a question. It was suggested that perhaps staff would reach out to Denver to see if they might be willing to turn some of their parks into detention ponds so that we could go ahead with a hundred-year pipe. Here is my concern, we are putting a huge burden on the backs of those people in that floodplain. And actually, I appreciate Councilmember Berantyne going forward because now I see, I mean, when I saw it in the fee schedule increase, I was, I was concerned about that. But now I see, all of these people in this floodplain, it has created financial problems for them, and, I mean, maybe the ability to sell their home. From reading this, I do believe it's probably in the best interest of the city to pass this, but I want to know how the city is going to mitigate this as quickly as possible. Because once we do the hundred-year pipe, and I know some of it is contingent on what Denver does, it will take the floodplain away totally.
That's correct. And then these, the residences and the properties that were previously in the floodplain would, you know, there's probably still a threat of flooding, but it's not the, not the hundred-year storm that's going to come, impact them.
So are we moving forward with some of these other things once we do this? Or are we just not going to worry about it once we do this?
No, as I said, we've, we've requested that the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District include funds to begin looking at that, and they have provided us in their draft CIP program, their five-year plan, a hundred thousand dollars to start towards that design. Those funds will need to be matched at least by the city so that we can get that going.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Berantyne?
Realistically, what is the timeframe for them to, you said it's five years for them to start looking at it. Realistically, what is the timeframe for this again?
Twenty-million-dollar project, it could be a twenty-year build-out. It would be very extensive and very disruptive to the neighborhoods.
Is it only twenty million now?
That was the estimate when the report came out a year ago.
I thought it was, I thought it was around twenty-seven million. That might have been an estimate previously given, or, yeah, twenty-five or twenty-six.
It's always been around twenty.
So it's a possibility that on the best, fast scale that we're still putting this area in at least twenty to thirty years of this floodplain before it's resolved.
Reasonably, completely resolved, yes. There are, you know, the way we phased the project, we may be able to take, you know, some of the, the more areas that have had problems out earlier. It just kind of depends on how it all comes together, and that's something we'll have to look at as we move forward. Is, how do we get the quickest bang for the buck?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve eleven C one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Weller. If we have more questions, we would call you back up. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Olson?
I don't, I don't know how we cannot pass this. It's, it's a responsibility and it's tough to do. I don't, I think any more information is helpful, but it's a responsibility and it's one way to help our residents protect themselves. I, I have, I have talked to a number of people about this. It's really hard, especially those who are living on fixed incomes. I've wondered if we could sort of develop kind of a, something to help, though, similar to when they have an emergency, some other kind of emergencies. And I think we do have some things set in place for that in some settings, but I don't know for this, we don't for this. So I don't, I don't know how we cannot, this is irresponsible, to not acknowledge what's going on and to allow for it. The nice thing about this is it does not require people to do anything. They can make their own choices on theirs, except if they're going to be developing their land further in some way, then they will have to go through, and we would want them to, because that's the reality of it. It's unfortunate, but it is what it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantyne?
I agree with Councilmember Olson on that it's unfortunate that it is what it is and that the land is the way that the land is. And we do want to get it resolved. Part of this problem ends up coming because Denver is resolving some of its problem and it keeps pushing the water further down. Some meetings I had in Littleton and regarding the plat and the Enter property and floodplain, we will also then be pushing the problem. Even when it's finished, our faster pipe will go into another community faster, and they'll have to deal with what we're dealing with, what Denver is doing and the urban flood drainage is doing. Because as that comes down and they keep doing a hundred-year pipe, and we have a ten-year pipe, a littler pipe going in, we're going to flood. And then as we push it down farther south. So I know that there's been some other discussions about how this is going to affect as it continues down, but we do have to do something about it.
Point of information, I think it's the other way around. Ours goes to Denver and they're not ready to handle our flow, but we're getting it from the other suburbs right now.
No, well, you'll have to, you'll have to join some of the meetings for the Enter property and the problems that are going on with some of the reservoirs and that as well. But as we're all trying to fix this, we either work together as a community with each of the communities to try and resolve this, or we're, we cause somebody else a problem.
No, that's absolutely true. I just wanted a point of information, though maybe there is something that I'm missing here. But my understanding is that's why we're so slow in this, is because Denver's not ready to go with the larger thing. We are, we're ready to go, well, it has to cost a lot of money.
The money, the money.
I thought I had the floor, but.
But we do, it was a point of information, so I'm asking.
No, the meetings that I attended, they were telling us that it was Denver that was already doing it and that it was coming down through Welsher Golf Course that they had already looked at that, that they had already done some sections of Denver. Those are the meetings that I attended and the information that I got. And I went to two of those, no, actually, three of the meetings that were held, the original information, one with the community, and then there were two after that where urban drainage came with all of the, with all of the maps. And the question was asked by numerous people at the meeting that then we're just, what happens when we push the flow down? And so as a community, we have to, I mean, it's going to go somewhere else. I mean, if we can make it go through us faster, it ends up going somewhere else. And that has been vetted and discussed and gone over. And I'm not sure why it's a surprise to anybody, but that's, that's some of the conversation that we've got to have with our other communities. If they start mitigating this, it affects us one way or the other, if they mitigate it and we don't. If we mitigate it and they don't, it affects them, so.
Can I interrupt just a minute? I think Councilmember-
I was agreeing with her, interrupt me.
I think Councilmember Olson is correct also. Welshshire belongs in Denver, our water comes from there, but we are really waiting on Harvard Gulch and that area down there where it drains back into the plat.
And that's when they looked at some other alternatives on how to do this?
Right.
So, I mean, they were looking at maybe even making part of the golf course a retention pond, so. I don't know how we, now we know why the meetings go so long, I'm sorry. I should have not agreed. But the, the problem of trying to mitigate anything, these costs, these additional costs, even for fixed-income people, we're talking about, if we do anything, we would end up having to do something for twenty to thirty years. And I'm not sure that we can start that kind of process. I do, I do think it came to, as a surprise to me for the questions that I asked, how far-reaching, if it can affect double the cost of a permit, if it can change what a contractor's going to do, or who's going to work on a home, or how they can sell it. This is an important and very far-reaching decision that we're making, and that's why the previous council took so long trying to go over it and vet this out. The state is already going to do it, but by us doing it, we impose the municipal ordinances onto somebody. The state cannot do that, only we can. And that's what we have been angstying over for all of this time in doing so. The state may do what they want, but we still have the option to do what we need to do too. But I share Councilmember Olson's concern that we need to move forward eventually and get this going.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, vote on this, please.
All votes have been cast, let the record show, six ayes.
Moving on to agenda item eleven C two, Office Supplies Paper Contract. Staff recommends council approve by motion the two-year contract with Source Office and Technology for office supplies with paper. Our staff source is Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkle. Good evening.
Good evening. So we're happy to bring this contract forward. It reflects a nineteen-point-six percent savings over our current providers right now, which is about seventeen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year based on our current usage of product. These savings are a result of an RFP process that was run by expense reduction analysts. We commonly call them ERA. And I know that most of the council will remember the contract that we put in place at the end of 2016 with ERA. The key terms are that the savings that they identify, we share in with them fifty-fifty for the first two years, and then the third year, the savings, the third year and beyond, the savings are ours. So with that, this is a thirty-four thousand, five-hundred-dollar contract over two-year period for savings. And the twelve-month period for core items stays stable, and also the non-core items are based on a discount off of retail. The paper in this will be held steady on pricing through May of eighteen. Any changes to these pricing will have to be documented based on manufacturer increases, so they can't just increase on us without backup. This is a contract that supports unlimited annual renewals. If we choose to do so, we can also terminate it within sixty days, so we're not tied down. So with that, we believe, the RFP had three respondents. Our current provider chose not to respond, don't know why, but they didn't. And we would select the Source Office and Technology as the best value for the city. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Berantyne?
Just for the city attorney, is the two-year contract, doesn't have any taper implications for our contract going?
Yes, it would have taper implications. It does have a sixty-day withdrawal, so if at any point we want it out of it, we just have to give sixty days' notice.
This won't come back to a council next year to be voted on?
No.
So as long as that clause is in there, we're okay?
Yes.
All right, that was the only question I had, thank you.
We also have taper language in the contract.
Pardon?
We also have taper language in the contract as well.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve eleven C one, I, sorry, two.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
All votes have been cast, let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you very much. Are you here again?
I am.
Okay. Item eleven C three, Proposed 2018 Fee and Rate Changes. Staff recommends council approve a resolution for increases to permit fees, land subdivision and development fees, zoning fees, and other miscellaneous fees to be effective on February first, twenty-eighteen. Our staff sources Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I provided a summary on these on December fourth, when you first looked at the resolution, and it was tabled till tonight. So what we've done, we were going to have a study session on it to provide additional detail. Instead of doing that, you will find the detail for each of the rates that we propose changing in probably the back of your packet, there's a page for each rate. And if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them, or bring some folks up who have the expertise in the different areas to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time staff put in on this. I was one of the folks that requested more information. This definitely gives me more insight. Going to that back of the packet that you referenced, it's far easier to access the information. And one of the questions I have is on the varying cost recovery rates. So for instance, if we were to look at the building permit fees on page forty-four, specifically asphalt roofing valuation, the increase, it goes from two-hundred to two-twenty. We're looking at a ten percent increase. And the cost recovery percentage on this particular process is ninety-five percent. Now if we go to the next one, which is adaptive reuse of historic structure, the application fee, this cost is doubling. It's going from two-fifty to five-hundred, and our cost recovery here is forty-eight percent. So how does the city decide we're okay with only collecting half our revenue or half our costs on this particular fee? Whereas there's other ones where we're closer to one-hundred percent of our cost recovery.
Karen Montanis, if I'm not mistaken, thank you, from the Community Development Group, who is intimately familiar with this, come up and-
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll only be speaking on the building permit side, if I don't have the information on the other. I basically went through and kind of figured out how much time we spend doing a basic plan review, how many hours are spent, and how many hours are spent doing inspections, and kind of analyzed those numbers to come up with the ninety-five percent of the recovery. Which is pretty much on track with what most municipalities are paying back. As far as the other fees, I'm not familiar with those, those are all in the same.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate the work that, that staff put in on this. I think it might be a broader question. So the city doesn't have a particular threshold they're aiming to recover that we'd like to recover seventy-five percent of all the costs or ninety percent? It seems to be pretty staggered throughout the different services performed.
I believe in most cases, it was a mix of how much does it really cost us to provide the service? And then how much are the neighboring municipalities also charging? We didn't want to be too far out of the range of- We didn't want to be too far out of the range of what the others charge as well.
Sure.
So there's a portion. And it was probably based on that analysis as to how the percentages fell out.
Thank you. One more question. If this were to pass, I believe it was February 1st that these go into effect, and please correct me there if-
All except for one.
All except for one. How will the public be notified of this? Is it they'll just show up on 2-1, and some things have doubled in cost? And then I do kind of feel bad for that city staffer who has to explain that something went from 250 bucks to 500 bucks, because there could be a little bit of sticker shock there.
We were anticipating to communicate it through our website, which is where most people do look for the rates as much as possible. All of our documentation will be updated, so as people come in, they will be able to see the new rates.
Thank you.
Anything in process, I would have to lean on the different departments as to how they plan to manage that, but I imagine, once it's quoted, that's what it is.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I actually have a couple of questions, only because my husband was building a shed, and we had to go through the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And we had, I mean, I guarantee you, we paid $150, and then we had to pay another $95 to have a sign made to post in front of our house. We lost the appeal, which is okay with me, but $300 for that is an exorbitant amount of money. And I do believe that there are some problems with the city's website and with posting. It nowhere in the city's checklist said that you have to have a site plan review. And I have issues with raising these fees if it is not obvious to the public what steps they have to go through. We were told by the Chair of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals said, "A simple phone call to the city will solve your problems." I wanted to stand up and say, "No, it won't." But I did not, and we walked out. And it's a learning process. But the learning process is, I don't want other people to have to deal with these same issues. If the website is correct, why should citizens have to call? And then also, if the website is correct, they could weigh whether, I mean, if you were building an addition on your house that was costing hundreds of thousands of dollars, I can see spending $300, but for a shed that I didn't, we didn't even have to have a building permit for. So I think, and like my husband said, he said, "They stamped it approved in 15 minutes." So I just, I have a problem with the one for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The other one that I have a problem with is the floodplain development permit, where they, it was $300, and now they've raised it to $400. We have an entire population, I don't know, 157 homes, I don't remember how many it is, that went from not having to go through this. So we're increasing, we would have just increased 157 homes, $300. Now we're adding another $100 onto that. And I have a problem with, the same evening, raising the fees $100, and, oh, by the way, you're in a floodplain. I don't think I can support raising that price for the floodplain delineations. So actually, is there any other discussion?
Oh, we haven't made the motion yet.
Well, I know, that's what I'm calling for. Or any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve Item 11C3, Proposed 2018 Fee and Rate Changes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We're probably done, but if somebody wants to call you back up, they will. Thank you, Kathleen, I appreciate it. Councilmember Berantine.
I have to agree with the Mayor Pro Tem that I have a little concern about a few of them. It would be to Councilmember Olson's point, at least some mitigation to go ahead and at least not, not do the additional fee on the floodplain. At this point, I feel uncomfortable doing it at the same night that we're putting them in a floodplain and already causing them grief. At least let it be. And then the concern about the website and, and the need then for people to go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals has been created by our Community Development Department several times in this last year, by them stamping plans approved and saying it's okay, and then coming back and going, "Oopsie, no. Now you've already built it, somebody won't approve it, and you gotta go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals." And it didn't just happen to our Mayor Pro Tem. We've had several people this last year that came. If there is some confusion on what's going on with that website, if it's not being clear enough on exactly what people can and can't do, then we need to make sure that that gets resolved. I have a feeling a few of the issues never got resolved, because they said, "I'm not going to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and spending that money," even when our own Community Development Department was gonna foot the bill for that. So if we could take care of some of those issues so that these things don't happen, and people wouldn't have to go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and we make some changes with, with where we've, you know, I would agree that maybe the Board of Adjustments and Appeals is not a very savvy one to raise right now, considering the problems that we've had over the last two years that I've been back in council. We have to make sure that we're not arbitrarily putting people in a position where they need a service that we've just raised the, the fee on. So I would agree with the two that have been made exception with. The, the notification for people, I think, needs to be a little bit more on purpose. I mean, I think we need to set a date, and this kind of people in process, each department's gonna make a decision. I don't think that that's an appropriate thing to do. I think people need to be notified. If they're savvy and they pay attention and they listen, maybe they'll get their stuff in as soon as possible. But we need to set a date and make sure that we've warned people and said, "Here, here it is. Here's what's happened." And it's not this kind of, "We gotcha" kind of thing going on, so that they know exactly what they're doing, so that they can go ahead and make plans. And I don't think it needs to be very far out, but I would feel much more comfortable with at least some transparency and notification and planning to go out to the public and... Because as it's been presented, it seems like it's kind of just up to each individual department, and that's probably not what you have planned. Okay.
No, not at all.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you raising that point. So the way this ordinance has been designed is it would kick in on February 1st. Obviously, when someone comes to do some interaction with the city, if their permit application is in prior to that period of time, then they're under the old fee schedule. If you submit February 1st or beyond, you're gonna be under the new fee schedule. That, I believe that's exactly what's been enunciated this evening, and that's the practice the city has utilized in the past with any changes that have been put into play. So it's not arbitrary, like, "Hey, I know Councilmember Berantine, I'm gonna give her the old fee schedule rather than new." That's not how-
No, they will tear my house down.
We'll probably double it, but-
No, I don't end up getting it.
Yeah.
Did it look like the Mayor Pro Tem got any special treatment?
Don't believe so.
To me. So, yeah, because hers was denied, so I don't think anybody's looking for, for that. But I, do you think that February 1st is enough time?
Absolutely.
To make some notice?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe that's, that's the direction that the staff has already begun to work in, in anticipation that the fees were, would be, would be changed.
Okay. But no fees will be raised, and there won't be any mis, I mean, you're working to communicate with everybody so that all of the departments, February 1st-
Correct.
And-
February 1st and beyond would be under the new fee schedule.
Yeah, I'm still just a little concerned that that might be a little tight timeframe, but if you're comfortable with it.
We feel very comfortable with implementing that. We've already had to roll it back, as you're aware, it was going to be January 1-
Right.
-from the time that it was discussed in December, and that was deferred due to the fact that there were questions, and probably rightfully so, so that we could actually show you some more of the background information and the sensitivity analysis that was performed with each of the fees proposed to change.
Right. And a lot of them, a lot of them doubled. I mean, a lot of them did go up. And a lot of the citizens in this community believe that the intention that the city should recoup all its costs, when they're the ones who pay for the time, if they weren't doing that, what would they be doing, and I'm still paying them, kind of stuff. I understand that we want to recoup our costs. I understand that we want to run a lean organization and make sure that we have money, but people out there believe that they're paying taxes already and, and supporting the government to provide certain services. So this is quite a, quite a hit on a few things. So I want to make this as transparent and as open to people, so that there is no sticker shock, as you put it. We can lessen that as much as possible and, and kind of be understanding about what's going on here.
Sure. No, that's totally understandable. And I think that one of the things the city has done a poor job in is educating the public in general about how budget works. And as you are very acutely aware, and I know most of the people who come to these meetings are, the city's property tax doesn't fund the bulk of the functions, it's sales tax. And so it's sales tax and/or fees for service, direct services such as these, that actually help to drive and help recover costs. And I think Member Questa's question is an outstanding one, and that is, why do we have these disparate levels of, of recovery? And I think Ms. Rinkel identified an answer very well, and we look at sensitivity to other, what other communities are charging, but we also haven't had the depth of conversation with the council from a policy level. What level do you want to see us recover? And that only, not only goes for these fees, but also for the operations of other functions, such as, you know, parks and recreation, where again, the Inglewood Rec Center recovers 60% of its cost, and the Malle Senior Center recovers 20%. You know, why is, why is there that disparate level of, of recovery there? So we would love to have these, these types of discussions with council to determine what, where, where would you like to see us to go and come up with recovery? And so this, moving to this one singular fee schedule, was our first stab and attempt at doing that, because heretofore, the city council has not seen fees nor approved them in such a fashion as this. So we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We believe that having noticed this in the public, talked about it in December, and now here in January, to let people know where we're headed, let people know how things are being funded, what our rates of recovery are, will help with that educational process.
I appreciate that. I think to be sensitive to what Councilmember Olson brought up, I would like to at least see some deference to the floodplain permitting, and then the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, so that we can come to, to have council discuss some of that, and that's my proposal. Some of the issues that are going on with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I have another question about timing of this. Would, what would be the impact if we waited another 15 days until it was like February 15th for this, to give a little bit more notice to people?
Even, I mean, that could be done. We'll obviously do what the council suggests, but yeah, you're gonna, you're seeing that overall, it works out to be about $20,000 a month in, in additional revenues. So if you're talking about half a month, you're gonna see half, half, the, half of that potential increase. That, of course, is predicated upon the pace of development, too, the pace of the person who's coming in and actually filing for any one of these permits, that's going to see an increase. So again, it's speculative, it's just an average. We're giving you an average based upon and predicated upon previous development activity. Weather patterns have an impact on that as well, if it's colder and snowier, and people can't operate in those types of environments, you don't see a lot of construction projects going on in the months of January and February. So I can't answer your question directly, but hopefully that gives you a sense and feel for that.
That's helpful to get some sense of it. And it is, it is the right timing for this to be a slower time and not worrying. There is no, no point in time where I would ever think there's any "you gotcha" going on with you all and the staff and trying to figure this out. We actually asked you to look at these more clearly and to look at fees scheduling, and so I'm very thankful that you did that. It's, you can't possibly miss, what did Ms. Ringle say? "Oh, if you haven't noticed at the end..." Yes, this is all of it. There's a lot of pages here for the public, if you haven't seen it, 64, line by line by line. So I would, I would like to see us, if we could, just delay another two weeks and have some sort of a notice that goes on the website that says fee rates are going up per our decision, because we're gonna decide tonight and in two weeks. That is really quick. I don't know if it's gonna make any difference in anybody putting off or hurrying and running for the sale before it goes up, but it's, it's a small amount. It shows good faith in our citizens to say, "We, we did give a few extra weeks." The other thing is, if we could go with the $100 less for the floodplain, I don't want to ever say we put people in a floodplain, they are in a floodplain. And I think we need to be careful about the language we use on this. They are in a floodplain, and we're trying to be responsible in the way that we oversee it and manage it, so that they have the kind of information and knowledge they need to make good decisions. To me, it's all about self-agency. So the more information we can get out, the better. So that would be the two changes I would make. The Board of Adjustments and Appeals, I'm not, I'm not as, you know, yeah, I'm not as worried about that one.
Is there, is there an amendment?
Want a clarification, Mayor, on that? Totally understand where you're, where you're coming from. I just want to make sure that you, as council, and the public understands then, if we defer that increase in fee for the floodplain delineation, then the city will be subsidizing that additional amount, because the time is, take, undertaken, what the time is undertaken by, by staff in that matter. And that's definitely, again, a policy decision on your part, but it's a-
And that's new money. I mean, that's, that's extra money that really is real.
Extra money, as well as, as you've heard from Mr. Weller this evening, they're gonna be looking at flood elevations of homes and whatever's being proposed, so that we're not creating more of a liability for a property owner who's making an addition to their property.
And out of 100 and some, how many would that even be? It's not very-
Not money, but that's, again, you're making a policy decision, and we'll, we'll implement that. But I want to make it clear, again, when council makes decisions that impact financially, it's the decision that you're making.
Okay. Fair enough.
Any further discussion?
I'm the one who's gotta be at work at 6:00. Yes, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the fees as they are without the increase in the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and without the increase for the floodplain for 2018.
Is that an amendment?
To this, yes.
Okay.
And just in support of that, I believe that for that period of time, it would encourage people within that floodplain, if they have an opportunity, to make some improvements. I hope that they take advantage of this opportunity, this space of time, to go ahead and do that before it goes up. And it will eventually go up, but I do want to give some kind of grace period to that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend to not increase the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and the floodplain.
Well, I move the whole thing, except to take those-
Okay. Oh, to go, all right. Okay, so we'll-
So we have a motion on the table, Councilmember Wink and Questa, and so you would just then amend your motion. Motion to approve with-
Correct. Councilmember Olson.
Everybody's okay with the timing, doing it in two weeks? So we don't want to add that in. Just leave it where it is. I mean, I'm fine if everybody thinks-
With the motion?
Two weeks, four weeks, doesn't matter.
So that it would only go into effect on February 15th, February?
I mean, we haven't talked about that yet. Is it that big of a deal, two more weeks or not? Do you think it, it's helpful or not?
It isn't, it isn't to me. I do think that that's a, a good suggestion. I would, I would be more than happy to add it into the amendment, if that's what you want.
I forgot about it. I apologize. I think that's where we need to do it.
Okay, so are you adding it?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we've held it off another month, so I don't think another two weeks is gonna make that big of a deal. Obviously, we'll just get a little bit less revenue, but if it makes people more comfortable to have more public notice, then I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. So now, will you read the amended motion again, so that-
I'm actually not clear on it, so-
See, that's why.
I can't imagine why. Somebody can help me as well, so.
Okay. Councilmember Berantine, you made-
I would like to move 11C3 with the amendments to not have the additional $100 increase for the floodplain, and not the increase for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals to allow for council to discuss, and it, and this new fee schedule in total not to go forward until February- February 15th.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Five ayes, one nay, one nay being Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. And so we move on to agenda item 11121, Mayor's Choice. We are going to discuss District One candidate selection. Councilmember Berentine.
I don't know. Are we supposed to I would like to make a motion to approve Carson Green as the new District One councilmember.
Is there a second?
There's not a second. This is taking me a little bit off guard in how we're going about it now. So now
Wasn't sure whether we, like, made a motion and then we could discuss people or how this was going to work.
I would prefer that we talk about how it works and then, I mean, we can do it that way if you want. Then we vote and we just keep going, and there's no, we could get done very quickly or we couldn't. That was very insightful, right? Very, not very.
Thought that's what we were doing. Then somebody else do something else, okay?
Who else would like to start us off, then? I mean, we've already been started off. Councilmember Questa.
Parameters might not be bad here. Are we just going to go around and really get to brass tacks, this is who we like, and then somebody will eventually make a motion?
And we'll discuss it. I don't know.
Because if we just want to go down the line and just start motioning for candidates, and then we, I'll second each one if that's what it takes to start the discussion, and we can vote on each one. I will go that route, if that's what we want to do. I think it is time that we, again, we, it's decision time. And I guess if we, however we advance that discussion, I'm happy to do so. And if that means just seconding on each candidate and we vote on each one and see if we can get one through, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so let's, let's move on with more discussion here. Councilmember Wink.
Between 5:00 and 6:30 tonight, we came up with a list of four individuals from the seven. And I believe, unless mistaken, we were going to speak to those four here and make a decision from that point forward. At the least, I thought we also talked about discussing a list of, a set of two, and some people wanted a set of three. I am a little surprised that we're narrowing down so quickly without going over those four, especially here in public.
And that's, that's okay. You're not being recognized. It is okay, because this is, this is the discussion. And so is there any more input about either of the suggestions that have gone on? Councilmember Olson.
I, I guess we could just go through the four that all ended up on our lists as sort of floating to the top and just go one by one and vote. But if we come to the end and we don't have anybody, then we won't have discussed it at all. And I mean, I guess if you want to discuss on each one, is that what you're proposing, is just take one, go with it, discuss, and then go on to the next one? Or is that it? I mean, one could pass, right?
Well
Without having talked about the other ones.
Sure. Okay. No, that's, I mean, you make a motion, somebody seconds, we start having a discussion. So that's what I thought we needed to do. So that's what I was doing.
But what you did
Because I didn't know we were going to go ahead and rehash the previous hour and a half and start saying everything that we liked about this candidate or that candidate. I thought we were kind of moving forward to start making a decision.
We never had a discussion together. We all told what we thought. But then, so if we take them, and this, I'm just, I'm entertaining this in my mind, so give me some time to talk it out for a minute. So we could go through this and say, okay, we talk about, you just put forward Carson Green. We could have a conversation about him and then vote. And if we all voted yes, and it was the first one, then it's Carson Green. But perhaps there's someone else that, do you want us to talk about the other candidates in the context of that one being? That's what I'm asking.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we appoint Andrea Mannion. I mean, how do you want to start this? I mean, does somebody just start talking about everybody? Or how do, I mean, usually there's a motion on the table, and how do you want to do it? Suggest something.
Yeah, I am thinking that maybe we talk about all four again and have a, and then have a vote, begin to vote.
All right. Councilmember Martinez.
I just want to note that it is almost 10 o'clock, and we're getting a little grouchy already. But I would prefer to talk about the four candidates that we agreed on, that we would talk about here. We said it was important to not make any decisions there and to come with at least two applicants that we were going to discuss here. So I would prefer to have the discussion more overall about each of the candidates, and then maybe start voting on each of them in whatever order is fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. Whatever it takes procedurally to start the conversation is great. And I am certainly cognizant of it being 10. That 30-day clock is ticking. You know, I think that we should at least begin conversations here before we call it a night. I would like to at least just make some progress on this conversation this evening.
Okay, I have a suggestion also. Councilmember Wink suggested in the study session that we perhaps give our top two. And part of the opposition to that was, I believe, was because we would be then making a decision. And we are now on the dais. I believe that we could move forward with that if there's consensus to do that.
Yes.
I concur.
Why is this the last thing we're doing?
Everyone concurs.
Yes. Do you need a motion to get that going?
No, no, no.
Just do it.
We're just going to do it.
Let's do it.
Okay. So, do we want to
I'm fine with starting since I started the
Okay.
My top two candidates then would be Othoniel Sierra and Scott Danford.
My top two are Othoniel Sierra and Scott Danford as well.
Okay. Councilmember Wink.
My top two are Othoniel Sierra and Scott Danford.
My top two are Andrea Mannion and Carson Green.
My top two candidates are Andrea Mannion, being my lead candidate, and Mr. Green being my second candidate.
And my top two candidates are Andrea Mannion and Carson Green. So that tells us that we probably have a long way to go. And so I think that we probably need to think about this, and we will put this on the agenda for February 5th. Councilmember Olson.
I would prefer that we set a special meeting and get this moving, because if we need to go to a vote, then I think I'd like the time. But I think we need to have another meeting. And I'd like us to talk about the other, you know, yeah.
Can I ask you, if we, I agree with you. I think we need to have a special meeting sooner than the 5th. Is there some way we could set some parameters for that? Or, I mean, how would you like to do that? How would you like to see that?
I have no idea. I guess parameters in terms of when or hours or what?
Well, once, as soon as we could do it, I guess we could ask staff.
You do have a 5th Monday this month, January 29th. Next week is fairly full with items that have been placed on that study session agenda directly, but that doesn't preclude having a meeting on another night either. But that would have to come to, you'd have to come to consensus on what night that would be. But as we discussed in the study session, if you waited to February 5th, you'd have to have, you'd be making a decision that same night then to have that person appointed and sworn as well, because your clock is ticking down. You'd have until the 9th of February to make a, make an appointment under the 30-day prescription of the city's charter. So as it stands right now, if you want, just with Monday nights, you do have January 29th. But if you want to have a special meeting another night, which you could do, you just have to decide on that.
Councilmember Martinez, did you have something you wanted to share?
I did. I was going to also suggest a special meeting. I think the sooner the better. I can do anytime next week, really, or the following Monday. I want to give us plenty of time in advance of the February 5th meeting in case we need an additional time to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Questa.
I too would like to set a special meeting. I know it sounds like we're pretty far apart at this point, but I'm still hoping that we can avoid that special election. And if that takes a special meeting, if that takes more than one special meeting, I'm certainly willing to come to the table any night.
Is the 29th the best? Hold on, I got to see it. Well, it's already
It is not for me. I already have, knowing that it was a 5th Monday, I already scheduled things.
What works for you?
I could do it tomorrow night, the 18th, the 23rd.
The 23rd would work for me. Does that work for anybody else?
It used to be at 6:00, though. 24th would work, 25th would work.
The 23rd would give us a week.
That is probably the only night I can't do it next week.
24th, does that work for you?
You bet.
I will make arrangements. I can do it on the 24th as well.
That's fine for me.
24th would work for me.
You can do any night next week.
Okay, so
Does, is staff okay with it? I mean, we don't, I guess we're not really, we don't really care.
You have to make it work.
We're trying to ask and be polite, you know?
So
We're trying. Would that work?
When we call a special meeting, it is, that is a meeting that we can actually make a decision at.
It's important the public know that. Thank you.
Okay. So I have several people wanting to speak. Do you all want to speak still?
No.
Okay.
Push them off after we talk. Prior to the meeting, is it possible that we could just get the rules for the special meeting again when it's posted, that we have to stick to the one subject and that that's all we'll be discussing, so the public knows, and that we can make a decision? Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember's Choice. Councilmember Questa.
One of the things that was overlooked when we were discussing the boards earlier is that I meant to compliment those that took all the positions, that have volunteered for service. And there were several there that were very good sports. They got assigned to boards or commissions that they did not initially volunteer for or apply for. So everybody was very commendable for doing so, and I think those folks are doing that. Secondly, this is tenuous right now how this is going to move forward, and I'm sure everybody is uncertain on what the final outcome is. I reviewed the ordinances as best I could. We are now operating with Mayor Protem as our governing officer, our presiding officer, and doing a tremendous job. I think it's very admirable. Who backs up Mayor Protem? If for some reason you were unable to make a meeting on a certain evening, who is back up to Protem?
Other than, doesn't it say in the charter that if, for some reason, I was not there, that council would appoint a temporary chair until
The city clerk calls the meeting to order, and the first, the first action is for the persons in attendance to select a temporary chair, and the temporary chair just serves for the term of that meeting. But they have all the same powers as the Mayor Protem would have.
Thank you. On the larger picture, as Mr. Cack described this evening, if this were to go to special election, it could go to at least, I'm understanding it's mid-May at the earliest, we would be having a result on that. It seems like the consensus was, we do want seven members present to pick a mayor. So we would just operate, just having a Mayor Protem for the next at least four months, five months, excuse me. Is that correct? City Attorney Brown.
Possibly.
Yes, until you decide as a body to select a mayor, you are operating under a Mayor Protem. And if the Mayor Protem were not able to make it, you would operate under a temporary chair. If, God forbid, anything were to seriously keep the Mayor Protem away, at that point, you would have to stop, even as a body of five, and make at least a temporary appointment to that position.
Thank you.
I'm not planning on going anywhere.
I wouldn't imagine so. And thank you. That concludes my remarks. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine.
I too want to thank all the people for being willing to serve on the boards and commissions. One of the issues that came up, as we've now appointed people to put them out there, and we have several alternates that we appointed, is that at least on a couple of boards, one for sure that I know of, they have made a autonomous decision on how that alternate works, that they do not participate, that they don't talk, and when somebody else is not there that's a member, that they're not voting. And that is not my understanding of what the alternate role is, that they are full members as alternates, that they are supposed to go ahead and participate fully, that only that they don't vote unless there is another member that is not in attendance in order for them to participate. So if we could get some of this resolved with the boards and commissions on how they're behaving, because there isn't a consistency in that, and it's not even from chair to chair on what's going on with that, and that's not appropriate, especially when, I know one of them is, quasi-judicial board is not an appropriate way for us to do. We have to know what they're going to do beforehand.
This, and just to answer, we are working on that. What we've discovered is a lot of boards that don't specifically say in their enabling ordinance how that's going to work, have made individual decisions within their bylaws. We're working on trying to get a standardization across all the boards and commissions. We hope to be able to bring that back to you in the next 30 days.
Okay. That's going to be very important in solidifying this, the community of each board, and making sure that they can work cohesively and move forward with issues. I do think that this body should take up putting moratorium on the PUDs coming forward. I am very concerned, unlike Councilmember Olson, I am very concerned when a board doesn't meet by charter when it's supposed to meet two times a month, because the staff said it was too busy. And we have issues going on where there was a contentious decision in September, and then all of a sudden, the staff has canceled all of the meetings for September, October, November, December, and then they didn't have a quorum in the January meeting. They probably got used to not meeting. And that's an important board. The Planning and Zoning Board is important. I went to look at the agenda for that board meeting, and the staff was presenting to the board exactly what they were going to be doing. And that's not the way that I think that this ought to work. There ought to be a collaborative effort so that that board is setting part of its agenda and understanding what they're going to be working on. And we've had already problems with the upcoming PUD on Tufts, and we still don't have what I believe is a good process for understanding the PUDs and putting them forward. I like the tool that our city attorney put together with us, but I really think that that tool, before we officially use it and sanction it here, should go to the Planning and Zoning Board and have some discussion with this council, so that people are well aware, and it's a very public process, on how we're putting, how we're, how we're making our decisions. And I just think that needs to be a little bit more public and vetted out, so that we understand how it should work. And if we're going to do that, then I want to make sure that we have some collaborative effort going on with the Planning and Zoning Board for how they're making their effort going on with the Planning and Zoning Board for how they're making their decisions as well, and at least have some say on that tool. I, I think it was really well put together. Allison, I greatly appreciate the work you did on it, but it came to us in an email during the middle of a process, and it, we didn't have a chance to discuss it or put it through a, a process. And I just would like to see that happen and kind of codify your work there, and make it something, if we sanction it, that way we have, have it available, and the public already knows how we're making those decisions. I have found out while we were doing interviews that there was a, an event at the plat. And I didn't think as much of it that night until I went around to a lot of the homeless that had been taken out of the plat. Groups of people, I went behind an officer who was going down the street like two miles an hour, and I realized that's what she was doing was, brought attention to all of the additional homeless people that were in front of storefronts along, in, in the long city center. I went over by where Hobby Lobby was, and I talked to people, people that were on Broadway. And I started just when I saw a group of people started, pulled over and I started talking to them. And the main push was that they had gotten taken out of the plat, that they were part of the plat push to get people out. And my concern was that maybe we weren't as prepared for it. When we had the issue with the motels on Broadway, I think that Eric, you did a beautiful job with that. I mean, you did an amazing collabor, cooperation between agencies to make sure that people had social service workers, that there were some places for people to go, that there were some identifying of, of some other alternatives. We had people that we interviewed for the council position that said that they were there that day and just saw people lined up on the street. And so, I'm not sure that we had that same kind of collaboration going on to make sure that we didn't just take a population of people as, as unsafe as that was for them. And I talked to a lot of them. They were very honest about the dangers that were down there, about what was happening to them. They were very, they were very honest. That wasn't a Narvana situation for them, and they're, they're just as glad it got cleared out. But they kind of also didn't, they were lost and didn't know where to go either. And that kind of confused the community as well, a lot of those businesses. And I don't think it was any intention to do any harm to anybody, but I, I would, I would like to see that same kind of effort and cooperation that happened before. See if we could meld some things a little bit better together, because I, like I said, I really greatly appreciate the time that people took to talk to me. And we had some very honest upfront conversations about things that are going on and challenges that they're facing. And maybe we could, maybe we could deal with some of the issues surrounding that a little bit more. I have asked a couple of times for the task force that you put together, for us to have some information on exactly what's going on with that, so that when situations like this happen, I can find out whether that's a viable alternative, or whether that's, needs some tweaking. Because if that task force was involved in this, then I'm concerned that maybe we need to get a few more players in this to make something like that. I made it very clear to them that I would not suggest they go back down there. That is not a good idea, because it is an intention, I assume, to make sure that we remain along that corridor safe for everybody, including them. So I just wanted to share that. I won't say anything more until we have a chance for council to have a little bit more discussion about it, on that whole effort. And like I said, I don't, I'm sure it was a, a challenge all the way around. But you are a compassionate, heartfelt man, and I know that nothing was intended to do anything to anybody that, just some unintended consequences, and we need to, to deal with it honestly and upfront, so that we can help everybody. And... That was it. I really appreciate all of the process last week, and I know that we've got some work ahead of us, but I'm sure we'll be able to come to a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
No report.
Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing from me this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
I'm glad, Susan, I'm glad Ms. Berantine brought up the homeless situation too. It was, I received several calls, and I think what I'm interested in knowing is what is our strategy. I've had calls from people who are really worried about the crime down there, and the concern for people who just walk through that area, but then those who really do care about the individuals who have made that their place of home, which is also illegal, but also a human condition issue. So I, I'd like to know what our philosophy is gonna be going forward. I didn't know how to answer what the plot process was. I knew that it's something that we've been working on for a while, but it would be helpful to know. And it's, the public's interested. Nobody wants to see anybody thrown out in the street, and yet we know there are other elements that are part of that whole situation. So if we could get a, kind of a philosophical approach we're taking there, as well as the details that went into what people saw. People saw it going to work, and they were like alarmed, and, and it was, you know, they're like, oh my goodness, what should I be doing? What should I be worried about? And so, it'd be helpful to get more information, particularly any social services that were contacted in the process.
Yeah, we'll put together a report for that, council. Totally understand. This has been in the works for a long time.
Yeah.
And there was quite a significant, there were resources offered to those folks. We had All Health Network, Dry Bones Ministry, the Severe Weather Shelter Network, Giving Heart Cafe and Housing 180, and then Change the Trend as well. So there was a lot of groups that were help, trying to help folks. But as you might imagine, and as you've seen, there were six thirty yard roll-off dumpsters of garbage collected along the river. But I'll have Sergeant McGrath, who headed this project up, and I, who I think did an outstanding job, and tried to be as compassionate as possible with, with the folks, and understanding of the situation we're putting them in. We'll get a report to the council.
I really appreciate that. I know that there's not the kind of information and what went into it, and that's what I'm, I'm really wanting to get out into the public, that this was not just a random thing out of the blue. Because I've done some ride-alongs where we've talked about it, what might happen, but it's just, we just need more information to make sure the public knows that thought went into it, that there was a heart in this process. And, and then also for us to learn in the process what we can do better in the future. And I'm sure there's some assessment now that it's over. And, I mean, it's not over. It's never gonna be over. So, thank you. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. And I too, I mean, I, I know also that we have talked about homelessness task force before, including the police and the different ministries, and, and also council. I mean, somehow council, I think it would be helpful if we were in the loop. So, I mean, I don't know what that looks like, but if, has anything gone forward on that?
We have not created a, obviously created a task force such as that. We've created a task force to deal with immediate issues. Obviously, urban drainage and flood control was extremely concerned with the safe, health and safety of folks living along the river, specifically those who were camping out under dead trees. Again, a flood, if a flood were to have occurred for whatever reason, not likely in the winter, but if it did, those people would have been swept down the river. Obviously, a lot of health and safety concerns about folks camping there without, you know, in, in sanitary conditions. So there are all those things that were done. You'd think the immediate concern was to address the health and safety of those who were there by removing the dead vegetation, again, clearing up trees that were deadheaded in the river, that could have had a deleterious impact to also to public infrastructure. And we worked collaboratively with a number of organizations. Clearly, this issue has been exacerbated by public policy of other communities who have worked to actually push these individuals out of their downtown areas and into, into ours and our, and our community. And I, I, I don't want to talk specifically about which communities those are, but I think you know what I'm talking about. We're having to deal with it. Everybody in this region's dealing with it. We do need to find some solutions, but they need to be regional and not necessarily just one community. Sheridan got involved with our activity as well, because they were concerned that these folks would go down into Sheridan, or even, even the golf course for that matter, where it's a continual educational process for these folks to maybe not camp in the swampy areas of the golf course. So you're exactly right. This is a social issue that heretofore the city has not had to deal with. Again, it's just seemed to have grown exponentially with individuals who were homeless for any of a number of reasons. And again, the negative externalities of having them camp along the, the river, not only for their own health and safety, but for that of the river health and that of the health of others, is something that we have to come up with a concerted plan to, to deal with. I don't have any answers. This, I, I wish I did, otherwise we would deal with this. And it's interesting, if you look at other jurisdictions here in the state of Colorado that have tried to deal with this, such as the campers along Boulder Creek in Boulder, they've spent millions of dollars, and they still have hundreds of people camped along Boulder Creek in, in Boulder that have a negative impact to the environment, as well as the social impact as well.
From my heart, I know that your compassion guides you, and I know that it was done as well as you could. It's a hard thing to face.
Right. Thank you.
To struggle with it, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I, yeah, I appreciate what you've done, and I think that's the information that needs to get out. I, I just have to say, and I've said this before, I, the homeless are all of our problems, which I think is what you're saying. It's not any one city's, and unfortunately, we like to blame, you know, the bigger brother up the street or something else. But the reality is, they're all of ours in the metro area. So I am really in favor of having a task force, and I'd be glad to see someone on, on council serve as a liaison, so that there's some sort of way in which we get more information out and think about. I, I know, I know there's groups of people that you're involved with, and particularly the ministries around town that are working on this, but I think we need to step it up with the public understanding what's being done, both for their businesses and just regular citizens who come through our community and see things, and worry about it, and also have a heart that goes out and want to do something. So I appreciate what you've been doing.
And I do too. Thank you so much. I also want to thank my fellow council members for all the hard work we've been doing, and we're not done yet. So appreciate everyone's willingness to can, continue on with the process. So, city manager's choice?
I don't have any report this evening.
Thank you. City attorney's choice? This meeting is adjourned.